Hundred and ten, stuff that I'm all ready to go. Biggest issue is water. So where we can get water from? So we have got in contact with, uh, the tribe and they're gonna have water over there.
Hello, what?
Uh, K Road and tighter giving or taking pipe there. And so we just gotta keep track of our gallons and then turn it into them and then make sure according to that. So we're gonna start hauling water tomorrow down their own three inch puddle in the file before we lay it out and get it, see if we can get it to keep some moisture. You know, everything is so dry.
It is.
Right now. This is gonna be quite a, it won't be so.
Do you think they'll be done this week?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna, with three inch out, well, it, you know, water it and then we'll put the inch and a quarter rock over the top of it and then plus put, we've got to lay out inch and a quarter from where we're doing that is ninety-four. So one oh two ninety-nine is the address. That is where the, so we're doing inch and a quarter from there to that address and then three inch from, from that address to a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
With me? And then we'll lay the inch and a quarter over the top of that.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, today I've done hauling on R three eighteen to three twenty-six and then last week we did well, same rock from D two thirty to two thirty-eight. So that's what we're working on this week is getting that watered down and seeing, well, service is gonna be so hard. I'm apprehensive about that too. Anyway, then two services, two tube replacements, three tube washings last week and then hauling rocks, hauling up our R. We are starting a little bit of three inch and the weight strength to fill in the holes where the mailboxes are, the driveways are that we don't grow enough pool lot of three inch damage for that yet. We're gonna do two services this week, one tube replacement, two tubes clean and then I did ask everybody in the monthly meeting for the two, uh, project and that is to be turned into us by October the eighth.
I had two, uh, lady got a hold of me about one seventy-eight from seventy-five R.
And there's problems in there?
Uh, just not good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna take a look at that.
And, uh, then I talked to gentlemen again, uh, about the parallel. Have we been over that since, uh, was it three weeks ago?
Which, which, which part were we talking about?
From seventy-five.
Where, where ground?
Henny Wester? No, no, Henny Wester.
Wester, okay. Uh, Josh told me that he hadn't been over that yet. Don't think it's good enough.
Apparently it didn't, didn't do much from what I was told, so.
Okay. I'll look at that.
So I need to overlook that.
But still needs some work.
Yes.
There, he said there's some, some places up here that, and I know it hasn't happened for quite some time, but when it rains, apparently most people are having to drive on the north side of the road, I think he said, because, uh, south side just prefer to dam the asphalt. So.
Yeah, I know there's some mud hot up there and each rock, I'm finished getting.
Sure, yeah, no, yeah.
And then we'll be to these other issues.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay.
I, I know, yeah, I know. I was approached yesterday about parallels too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, back what you're saying. Um, did you want to go into executive session and discuss, uh, an incident of last week about the ditch?
If you want to, that's fine.
However you am, I'm sure you are an employee.
Yes. It's been taken care of.
Okay.
Yes. And spoke with him and, and.
I'm sure it was an innocent situation.
Yeah, that's not the way things go now.
Right, good.
Okay.
Sure you hear.
Okay. Keith?
Let's meet out of your place. He must have been out of Canada all weekend now.
All right. Then we're gonna go out and work on my land swing driveway or.
Did you, did you visit with him?
Uh, did.
Nice guy.
Very nice gentleman and then he wanted two extension put on. It happened Friday and what was funny was I was leaving there and I met his daughter, I personally met his, running the semi to, and I know that's where she was going and so anyway, so they got him, cause he wanted to, you know, cause.
They're trying to harvest?
They're trying to harvest and, and now that we have taken the ditches and made ditches in the road, there's not room for them to turn the semi, cause it was only a twenty, twenty-five foot two, well, that's pretty tough to turn the semi.
It's, it's a forty-eight footer, it's tough, tough to get around that.
Yes, yes, so.
Yeah, then I think the ground was filed up there.
Yes, and he looked on that and he didn't think it was enough, so we went back to get more and so he said that was efficient, yeah.
Okay. Now, how are we doing on the minimum maintenance trips up north that we look at?
Uh, as far as I know, absolutely everything is done. Uh, I have not called Larry back the second time. I know I met him Saturday night there, the stuff like it was all in rain, so I would've thought that he had a major problem, that he was.
Right.
At fault by now.
Okay.
But, uh, to my knowledge, absolutely everyone had been done except for three team from R to S, you know, there by notice.
Yes.
We need to go in there and dirt, dig all that sand out.
Yeah.
And, uh, do something with that too, which is kind of an option to do that, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
But it is hassle besides that one spot.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
You got the message from, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be mine.
Okay, so who is the first one?
Uh, one, I think it was one of the wives. No, it's not mine. Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, it's on two thirty eight T, uh, there's feedlot up there. I, I, I don't know which one it is, cause I have to ask each time when they send me something or call me, they don't have a name on it, but it's right at that area, they've got a feedlot up there.
Okay.
So it's, it's the ditch and apparently originally what happened was they mowed the ditch area with a riding lawnmower.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not conducive to a riding lawnmower. So, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
I know. Just take a peek at it.
The ditch is not conducive to a riding lawnmower.
Yeah, it's too deep for a riding lawnmower to get in it.
Okay. We have no obligation to, I mean.
We can't, we can't make sure that every ditch is, I mean, when, when the key passed in mine, I mean, it's a lot steeper now than it was and.
I have to look at that, I don't know.
Their, their kinda comes to that they don't wanna be shaped ditch, be shaped ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just not their fault, right?
Right.
On record. Yeah.
I'm just gonna quick look at it.
Yeah, then you're our thing.
Okay.
Cause I don't know, I didn't go look at it, I had a lot of things going on this past weekend, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're ready for the week.
Your meeting, your meeting the other day was good?
Yes.
The meeting, good?
Are you looking at?
Did you hand out? Did you hand out the?
No.
No.
Slam was good, thank you. Okay. I had a good one.
You too.
How'd you get any English from out the gate? You wanna attack? Yeah, we can do a couple things if you want. Yeah. A G's office, um, talked to the gatherer and co-coder. Um, she says that it's fine to class here, so, and all I have to do is send her like the PowerPoint slides that to do and so I think this is probably the question is, when you guys on schedule, it probably, you know, sometimes the future is next, it'd be fine and, you know, yeah, if it's, if there's other folks that wanna, you know, watch it and learn something for themselves, but, uh, I'll, I'll for it. So it could be about an hour and cover some of the same things that he probably did, but I'll maybe.
Or the wood pressure report.
Yeah.
Okay. While we set it up, next Monday you'll be done with it?
Yeah, we can do it the afternoon.
After per credit? If you're good with that?
Yeah, by what time?
Uh, he's really done by one thirty.
Make sure that. So.
Yep.
Well, that's okay. Okay. So we'll get that done in.
Perfect.
Since our plan's in, we can do it. Um, the other thing is, don't do research on the fly. We'll return to our discussion about what to do about a planning commission member. It turns out the statute, I was citing the wrong, the wrong statutes for specific urban counties that did not see the per se statute for that, so it only applies to sedentary non-adjuncts, that's not to you guys. So the actual operative statute is KSA twelve seven forty-four subsection B, uh, meaning that it says governing body may adopt rules and regulations providing for removal of members of planning commission. And I looked over what's in the incorporating design grant, I didn't see anything that I would do.
Right.
So you can grade the rules, you just have not, and so.
It's, yeah, and I think it was originally created nineteen.
Maybe sixty-nine or sixty-five.
Sixty-five. So I think those are something we need to come up with, uh, and have inserted into those.
Okay, so just to get feel for it, I mean, the other thing then is you need some, you guys are the body that will review it, it's just, there's no other.
Right.
Thing that, track to do, maybe above subsection C.
Right.
Kind of falls to you and I'm assuming it's something to the effect of, you know, if the commission finds that a member is violating X, Y, Z, then say remove him on the sort of code.
Right, and at this point, we have had someone who has violated, uh, the zoning, uh, public notice, we, uh, force it back, so.
Okay, so that's probably the next step we're extracting is more listening to, in addition to what you have.
Yeah, going through and draft those.
So that's the lesson, always take these for yourself. We'll take a quick answer.
Yeah, ask again, KSA twelve seventy-seven forty-four dash D?
No, no, it's, we got twelve seven forty-four.
Twelve's.
Seven forty-four.
Twelve seven forty-four. D is a dollar?
B is a point.
B is a point. Yeah, thank you.
Um, let's see.
When was that written? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and. Many plating ninety-one.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, a stand on finalized training assistance agreement with Scott, so it's to be very well. He's incorporated, you have a fair form, who does?
Yeah, we've got a copy of that, uh, copy for the, for us to sign and then copy for the employee.
Yeah, it's just a motion for the officer.
So have you guys had a chance to look over the training assistance agreement?
Nope.
I just made it.
You made it, made it. Okay, you didn't email it to?
No, I just.
I didn't wanna, I was doing my copy.
Okay, I'll pass this down, you guys will take, uh, coming in and look over that, that you were, maybe aside.
Okay, I'll just wait till I get everything.
Okay.
Um, I didn't know if this, this is new?
Yes, I had a lady asking about private areas.
Private areas?
Yeah.
Oh, now you get, that crops up about every three years.
But she does not much preening from her, she does actually bury the pot.
On their property? Okay, well, I've never ever been across there. Yeah.
I don't, we dealt with the privations, those that have been predated.
Predated, you know, spread or something, whatever.
But some areas actually have family plots.
There, there are some places within the county and most counties that have family burial plots from years gone by. I mean, it's been, you know, thirty, forty, uh.
Yeah, there's, I'm assuming you guys have passed any resolutions, you guys know, because it's hard to stay alive, I guess, and you just have to look at, cause I have no idea.
Might.
Didn't you just have one of these last year?
Yeah, might have, okay, I believe one who did was allowed it, but, uh, we need to double check with, with Kate.
I've got the statues, I think, on?
Yeah, I think.
There we go. Yeah, I think. Well, that's, I think that's actual, you know, real by God cemetery, right? So, you know, that would be open to, to the public.
Yeah.
Um, generally, and I, and you're talking about this is a family, this is a family and only family, uh, opening it up for.
Correct.
Burial for anybody else, and I still think that, I mean, I'm familiar with the township county system and actual cemetery.
And what, what happens typically fifty, seventy-five years later, then somebody else on the plan, they want the county, they take a little maintenance of it, then it becomes a nightmare.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a couple of those around here, um, and it is, it is a burden, you know, to find somebody to try to maintain those small.
Well, one of, one of the things too is, uh, before, and I know this for a fact, is the one that I referred to before, it's on private land that was not their cemetery. Uh, when this land is sold, the purchaser, it, it's stated right up front, because I went to the auction and it's stated right up front, the purchaser is now obligated to maintain a fence around the cemetery, maintain the cemetery in good condition as far as just mowing it, whether they mow it, you know, once a month or whatever, it doesn't matter.
Right, right.
And the, the bad thing is, when the purchaser stands right there and says, yep, I'll do it, by golly, we'll take care of it, we'll do everything you say.
There's no enforcement.
Yeah, there's no enforcement for it, because, uh, there's no fence around this one, cattle are walking through it, the, I'm sure the stones are just gone, so I, I, how, how do you enforce that if there's no?
There's no dedication.
No way to enforce it.
There's no dedication to the land itself, so technically nobody has the right to go on it, but for, you know, and that's not one of them, so not mowing, uh, currently, yeah.
But then the, the new property owner had to sign a piece of papers that says, I'll take care of it.
Yeah, but that.
But it's not worth it.
That big, that's for you, yeah.
Cause there's, like I said, there's no enforcement, there's no, no way to get any enforcement on that. And that's what bothers me.
The person signed it, maybe Gary did it, so good luck.
Yeah, true, but it should be in the D, shouldn't it?
Well, I mean, that's just it, is when you have the true kind of county township, reveal cemetery dedication, the land is dedicated for cemetery purposes, so, you know, that then puts the duties on county or a, a location township where they have full right of entry, full right of control and manage it and, you know, you're not limiting it to, to span, so, I mean, I haven't, I haven't ever had the need to go and read about that, but, you know, the implication being, I think, the only thing that I didn't catch before right today was the fact that you guys could end up holding it, just because it's gathered so many, so many remains.
Right, it becomes a, a, a public responsibility.
Yeah, which is not kind of what the whole idea is. They might have said, no, they have to, very cemetery, deal with all that, and you guys can maintain it, it's no problem. I'll deal with looking at that, I'll see if they, if we've done it down there.
Yeah, was Kate, did you get ahold of Kate or she, she, Kristy? And we could have her come down and see what.
Um, they're talking private for the.
Did you get to read that training?
Um, from what I'm reading here online, it, it says Kansas law required burial, nothing in Kansas law required burial in the cemetery or prohibits burial on private property, but there again, what it comes down to is local zoning groups is what it says, so.
Yeah, I think that's what we ran into last.
Yeah.
We'll check with her when she gets down here.
We're just kinda strange, but, you know, I've always said just plant beyond the pasture on behalf of.
Yeah.
So.
Years ago, that's what happened, so I asked the county, it's not so, so. I got a family member buried on our farm, well, former farm, I'd say.
Well, it makes sense and, you know, cause the mentality, you're still thinking, you know, bits, you know, public sin, it's not a cemetery, not private land, but you're actually partitioning off somebody. And I can see it obviously at the city, you couldn't probably want that, but I can't go there.
Okay.
So.
Are you?
A year, year and a half, two years ago, somewhere in there, we had somebody that wanted to be buried on private property, what are our statutes, what are our regulations? I was refreshing them.
It was special use under, so it's, um, I'm guessing that's A one, I'm dying.
If I had to guess, I, but I don't know the.
Article said.
Oh, yeah.
Section three, number seventeen, special use permit, uh, D cemetery, prevent burial of the man.
Isn't there also somewhere near, if I remember correctly, that they have to go through the procedures of bombing and everything that's required the state law?
Uh, uh, state does not require anything on private.
Okay, cause I know there's, there's some groups that don't believe in it bombing, so.
Does anything have to be filed with the registered deeds on that stuff? So that it's, there's a public record of it?
We had discussed that in the last one.
Would seem to make sense that way, you know, moving forward fifty years now, somebody purchases the property, would know that it was, be aware of it after all.
Yeah, there isn't anything that you have to say, and I don't know if there was a recommendation.
I thought that we had said, I thought we talked about that and said, uh, we felt we needed to have something for.
Yeah.
Family as a special use.
Uh, you're gonna have.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be filed with registered deeds too.
And so every time on a sp, on a, on something, every time somebody purchases that property, they're gonna have to reapply fully as you need.
Or, or the people who use it, or the state department, they still have to do it, whatever years that they do it. So, I mean, that's how you put conditions on it too, is, you'd say, so the, the, the permit that, you know, if they ever sold the land to someone, family, X, Y, Z, or whatever, so.
And there was something in, in the last one, I don't remember if it was working on it, I mean, I could file.
You might do it. That way we get consistency, I think, you don't have to do it now, I think, uh, we'll, if you wanna research it and then get back with us, we can.
Are you gonna see it?
No, that's fine.
Did you want to skip a little?
You can't, yeah, I just, if you've got time.
Mrs. Scope?
Yeah, if you've got time, that'd be great.
I don't know if there's somebody waiting for you or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, sorry. Um, on this, uh, contract, are we providing ten ninety-nine for the court on contract? And it says that they'll have to, okay, we'll apply IRN.
Oh, no, I have this back. This is a county report.
So, so if somebody hires in.
Right.
Well, it says that they have to get ahold of the IRS plan and/or their tax, so does that separate ten ninety-nine that this amount of money is spent on this?
I don't think that's the way that ten ninety-nine would go in that, I think it would only be ten ninety-nine if. Well, yes, purchase, so if they, so it's just a, maybe it's a debt obligation of the bank and it was, yeah, I'm trying to figure out how that would ever.
Just a question.
Income, because it's not, it's not really, it's not monetary income.
Correct.
We're providing.
Right, yeah. Hmm, I don't, I don't.
I don't, I don't see why they have, why they have to come back the IRS, cause it's just not enough, there's not a dollar. No, there's no, there's no money exchanging hands, other than if they quit, and then there would be repayment back to county for the cost of training on a parade escape, correct?
I don't know if there was something that I remember that they had a, you know, deductibility of certain training or something, I, I don't know, maybe that could be more general, I just said, you know, this is, I mean, this transaction is funded, you, you know, you can check the debt, question by implications, not that.
That caught, that, that sentence just caught my attention.
Yeah.
Because that, to me, that would be no different than us sending Bryson to, uh, specialty mechanic school.
Right.
You know, he's, we're not gonna give him a ten ninety-nine for that.
Well, there's, well, there's a, I mean, I think what I'm understanding, uh, look at that is that it's, is a, is a taxable fringe benefit, some question.
I would say no, I don't see that that being impactful.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a full IRS reg and, and report on that and instructions on that, like, the thing I'm used to seeing is use of, of city, county vehicles, personally used to pump, you know, rather, and, and when those, those are or are not taxable fringe benefits and the training is taken with them, so it's just a question of whether that's a, do they have to report the cost of that as an income item on the taxes? I mean, did they get, say it's a thousand dollars, did they get a thousand dollars?
Right.
In theory, that's a benefit. It's a taxable benefit.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that I filed that, oh, the deed's office, but I'm not sure, cause I haven't been authorized to, I don't know, I can go down and check.
And I, I don't think it would be a bad idea on the sec on number two, if that, if the copy of the map, location, was filed with registered deeds also, I think that needs to be put in there, that way there's a public searchable document, so you would have a map of the location of it, uh, but you guys tell me, I, I mean, everything else seems pretty standard, contain the fence. Um, it's exclusively for relatives by blood or marriage.
Special use rule?
Special use rule, yeah. But I, I, I think that language should be added in there that, that a cop, a copy of the map, giving us a location of where this is and length and width off the fence, so that we know where the burial occurred, um, for public records for future use. Um, and then make sure it's, I think the language in here also needs to be litified with registered deeds. I think that needs to be required on, on these, that would be searchable.
Yeah, that, that's probably, assuming if they got it before the registered deeds, then that would be a point about. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where they, how, how they index that mapping. I mean, do they have it on track index as a miscellaneous item or?
So, we can, we can mark it on our map.
But is that?
Now, would be searchable as a.
So, would that be searchable, so if, if, uh, title company is, is, they're selling the property, would that be searchable, would that be a normal place that a title company would look and go, oh, by the way, you purchaser, you need to be aware, there is a six hundred square foot burial plot on this property? That's my whole thing.
The title's name, but I don't.
What's that?
I have, I have, I do a lot of title work myself and I don't think that would be on that.
But if it was in the.
I would.
If it was in the register of deeds.
Yes, I would.
Attached, then I think that's.
Attached to that special use document?
Or separately as miscellaneous item, this is burial site.
You guys agree?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have?
I think it needs, I think it needs to be documented.
Let's, let's make sure it was add that verbiage in, so that, so that we're making.
Yeah, moving forward. Loop in the registered deeds too, to see if they, what format they want is, I was just thinking that, you know, how do you put affidavits in to, to just about anything from the end, pretty much? It's just what they would, seems to be a time must fit to figure out how they would want.
Yeah.
A format of document.
Yeah, we can have Mary come down if she wants to come down, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, I, I'd say.
Get your closure on it.
Do you wanna ask her if I should file this with her, which I think I did? That way, we push them down.
You guys will see this.
Question. Do you remember if Kate, Kate tried it? She did. Okay, and can you come down? You want for him? All right. Question names. Well, I had it noted, right, so I'm guessing I. But I will. Can I say it? How are you, Bruce?
Hey, Bruce, how you doing?
Good.
Good, Bruce.
I got a question.
Okay.
Are you dealing with the latest? I need to call my shop.
Yeah, be glad to.
Thank you.
All right.
No problem.
What, what time will you be back?
Uh, probably about nine AM, yeah.
Okay.
Probably working about thirty, twelve thirty.
I'll give you a holler.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, see you.
I guess the only thing is, this doesn't look like it has any time limitation. It's like a special time limitation, it's a normal special use command, right?
Ownership?
Yeah. Well, is that a conditional on ownership, that's the only.
There, we don't ever have any conditions on, um, time on special, most of the.
It's ownership.
Yeah, it's just ownership.
So, if you put a, if you put a mobile home in under, under a special use permit and you, you, the, if it moves out, or you move out and sell it, then.
Okay.
A temporary use, have a time limit on it?
Sure.
Okay. That's the problem is, uh, I think generally that seems funny to me, I think it's just a question whether this format doesn't. She took it about it, so I just wanna make sure what you're expecting is happening, which is that's getting an index amount.
Yeah, that's, that's the important part, I think that it's getting put somewhere where it's searchable for the future commissioners, future public, so that whenever that property is sold, it will at some point probably for different members of the family may not even know, you know, that, that type of thing. So, later use, I think it's important to send that around.
So, do you see that in, in the special use law or is it not?
Um, I don't think that, I mean, that, this is for, down first, there's, yeah. As long as it's somewhere, so that when it comes about, if, if we were to get more every year, it would be a standard procedure as, as is.
So, does that need to be an amendment to that D cemetery?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Something under it that says to be filed with registered deeds.
Well, yeah. Well, I mean, the story says this is a special use permit. Cause generally that means that you guys can cover their conditions on, on plan issue. So, I think that's something that the other question has to file, and you're doing it, right?
This is the first one that.
Yeah, first one, then. Well, yeah, I mean, the only take of the detail to me is, is that the county's filing, is your church. I mean, cause I like how the document is, how luckily they tried to divide. So, that's kind of a question for later.
I think your concern though is if there is no longer a me or a you, that anybody that reads the zoning regulations, they would convey to the planning commission that that's a stipulation and it is filed with registered deeds.
So, that would be, yeah, and that's the correct view, because right now, based on some circumstances. On basically what we read there, and if that's a good standard, then, then the question would be how to preserve that as a standard, not to be in red, uh, be the direct, walk upon, if somebody comes along and how to do it, but, uh, so, it's a good addition.
Did that family use that plot for cemetery, you know, or they just wanted it out? Okay, I was curious.
Maybe for future use?
Yeah, probably.
Our question was on that doc, document that was filed, is that a format that is, when you receive that, are you able to put that in track index of the title company and see it and then be able to note?
Yes, it would go in the north half, the northwest quarter of twelve eight twelve. And it would have been. It would have been from, uh, Jackson County zoning admin, or, yeah. Ja- Jackson County zoning administration to, probably Gerald Green.
Yep, that's, that's good enough, because then somebody would be looking at that and attached to that piece of property and.
Perfect.
Presumably somebody would say that's, you know, one of our little exceptions, and that would be, we've got a special use command for it.
Great.
So, I think that's the only question now, is I think we can tell this person that they need a special use command along those terms, that's good, and then the next question is a zoning amendment to, and try those in some way and ask process, meaning that every time you give them, you should have that as a back and file. That's what you're asking. Make sense?
I, I think so.
Yeah. Division of seventeen K. Look, it's ready.
Really deep.
Do we want to go ahead and have it put in there?
That's a resolution, that's a resolution. It would be just a, a suggestion up to the zoning.
So, November twenty?
Yeah. Maybe scan that in the center and, for a minute.
Yeah.
No, they should.
What?
Twenty two, twenty two, twenty two, first.
Okay, that's a so many.
This, uh, this Jackson key didn't, not bad. I, I put it right here, it's close, so.
You got, she got her table.
I'll try to cover a letter. Well, you can do that too. Or, or just drag, just drag, just drag, I mean, is it just one, or was it just a one page? Yeah, it was just a letter, it's down, so.
It's good enough.
If we have, um, probably, that's, shows responding, yeah, I just would, we have a three hundred and fifty, I could. So, I'll get one too. That way, I, you know, I'm sure that I, it's been. Yes. Certainly, if that lady was asking, it's probably something.
Thank you for that answer, please. Thanks, appreciate it.
We'll have to give that to you right now.
Okay.
Anything else for me while I'm here?
Next up. Hold yourself and, you know, ready this.
Honors. Do you have a chance to, to, you know?
People are dying.
Yeah, and I'm still, I'm still with ten ninety-nine. I've, I'm looking at this and I don't see anything here anywhere that I can see, because ten ninety-nine, you're talking about training, okay? Uh, well, there's a ten ninety nineteen, which is for tuition reimbursement, for tuition, which is not what this is gonna be. It is not, they're not gaining any monetary, uh, there's no money changing hands, yes, it's a benefit. I guess you could call it a benefit, but I don't quite understand how we can, because it is a, it is a training that we're requiring.
The agreement doesn't say that it would be ten ninety-nine or anything else. My one would say.
Doesn't it say ten ninety-nine on there?
It's just, uh. Contact your, uh, contact your county.
Contact your.
Or a, uh, IRS.
IRS or tax agent to obtain information on correct procedure for recording benefits received from the county for tax purposes, and that's what I'm, I'm having a hard time, okay?
Yeah, and I, what I think is that we're being cautious here, because basically says, oh, you're tax preparer.
And then you tell your community, you're some.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you, that is, I think the part you do ten ninety-nine is saying that only. I think it's a taxable fringe benefit. You, if, if you don't withhold, that's a trick, if you don't withhold for it, I mean, as far as that goes, they're still responsible for the value of that, and taxes, and the working job that's caught, you know, you know, that, that thing where they receive from, you know, the thing, and it takes away the refund or.
Well, so that, that's, I guess that's where I'm getting kind of hung up on this, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm overthinking it, but, so, Christie goes to training, right? The county pays for it. Does she have an obligation to report that to her tax preparer as a benefit? I mean, that, that would go to everybody, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that, so I don't see that this would be.
That's a check that I need to do, because that's, I was being cautious in the sense that.
Sure.
Don't let anybody wander into the trap.
Yeah.
But that, I, I can take a look, and I know, I know the IRS reg, and I know the publication, and it's there, it's there.
Right.
It's on, it's on. But it's, it's always a question of men giving employees things. And, and benefits if they're taxable benefit.
I think what you referred to earlier, you drive a company car, you use it on weekends for personal use, you report that to your tax accountant that you, over the course of, uh, the year, you use it for five thousand miles. That is taxable.
Yeah.
Where this probably isn't, but you're being cautious on that contract by saying, note to your, uh, your accountant that this happened, that way all bases are covered.
Yeah, you know, good strategy. And that's, and maybe we can settle, you guys can tell me if you want to settle or not, but that's what I would say is that, it's just not a thing that's discussed at all in the publication, I wouldn't be worried about it, but, you know, the, the, those are things that get pretty nuanced, like what you said there is, if a maintenance employee takes a truck home that has a tool bed on it.
Different, different situation.
It's not a taxable fringe, because it's not suitable for day-to-day use.
Yeah.
So, it's like, you know, you don't, you might get into what's, what's distinction, and it may be the case that if there is a complicated rule of something there, a little bit more meat and just, it's not a benefit if it is, then that might remain, just because we don't wanna trip into that stuff.
Yeah, okay, well, like I said, I just, I just don't see that what we're talking about as being a benefit, but, uh. I'm definitely having a hard time swallowing that one.
Well, we gave employees, say, two thousand dollars for a clothing allowance.
Different, different situation.
Different situation.
It is, I know, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, that, to me, it would be more applicable for what we're talking about with safety shoes as a benefit, because that is a monetary.
Yes, buying shoes.
Yes. Okay, we're giving them a benefit of math.
So, do you want that taken out, well, taken out?
Well, let's, 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 can you look at that and double check that? Because like I say, I'm, I'm, I'm just having a hard time swallowing that, 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 what we're talking about for the training for the, the CDL would become a benefit. The only thing that's gonna benefit them is they're able to move up, once they get their CDL, they're able to move up in, for a, for a pay scale, you know, that's.
So, we'll take a list till next week.
Yeah, if we, if we could, I, I would like to, just more clarification on that, okay? All right. I don't know, I'm sorry, like I say, I just kind of, no, I'm just.
Do they know? Right, that's, that's what the. It's crossing your teeth and not in your eyes. Todd, what else you got?
I had no comment on, um, somebody sent me that legislation.
I, that was me.
Okay.
Uh, no, not this time. Yeah, so.
FYI.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I might do is. Yeah, we'll wait on that, um. All right, what else do you got?
Uh, just solar base.
Okay.
What plan would be on that? Do you wanna discuss that at all?
Yeah, we can, we can visit about that, uh, here in a little bit.
Okay.
I think at this point.
That was my last side, I just.
Okay. We've got an agreement with, uh, the CPA, the auditing and accounting, uh, we just need to, if we wanna continue to have them, the, we're going, you pronounce it however I, uh, continue with. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and their.
Audit.
Yeah. I didn't do it for yours, I think, Christie.
Yeah.
So, don't worry about it.
You're happy with her?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, is there a?
He's wonderful.
Contract.
You got it, okay, yeah.
As long as it is below five thousand here in fifty dollars.
Okay.
So, you want to take that out?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes right now and then if cost goes up then we can look at, you know. Six one half is the other.
Let's go ahead and just delete that out. The only, the only thing is that, I think the, the, one detail is is that if they have mileage or costs in attendance. Yeah, it, there isn't, um.
Lodging meals transportation.
Because they're taking them up there and, or they use that truck to run up there.
And the new tools and keep, okay, then that's.
Okay. I have ten fifteen and you are up.
All right, thank you. My name is Dr. Justin Spees.
Did you still appear? I came here and you had all these pipes.
I've got hearing aids and I, it's hard for me to hear you back.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyways, like I was saying, my name is Dr. Justin Spees. Can you hear me now?
Yes, Justin.
Dr. Justin Spees and so I came here because I seen what appeared to be some first and fourth amendment or I, amendment or violations that are happening in some of your recent meetings. And as someone that's had that happen to him, I felt a sense of duty to come and ask you some questions about your meetings. So like the first question I have for you guys, what, what rules apply to these speaking right now?
You've got on the agenda.
Yeah, how much time do I have?
We have three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yeah. But I, I reserve the right as chair to nominate if, if the conversation can extend, if you allow to extend it, um, I, I have the capability to do that.
Okay. All right, so the second question is a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, there was a guy named Tom. He came in here to speak and you guys stopped him from speaking. He said that is because his attorney had sent a cease and desist letter to you guys. And I was just wondering what, uh, what authority you guys have to, uh, to do that? What, what part of the constitution allows you guys to, uh, make it so that individual isn't allowed to, uh, come in with his free speech and also to redress government? What, what part of the constitution?
I'll probably, I'm gonna be clear about this. Mr. Collin?
Toplin, Toplin.
He characterized that as a cease and desist. There was an attorney that sent a letter on his behalf that was advised at the time that that occurred that the conversation wouldn't be limited because of the sensitive nature of the possible litigation that resulted from these communications. Now, we have obviously disagreement with this gentleman about three hundred things because that's not allowed. He's, he has indicated to the county that he has engaged counsel and he has indicated his intent to proceed with that, but nothing has been done. Uh, there is a requirement, as I've said before, that counsel communicate with a counsel, not directly with an individual who is represented by counsel, which repairs our ability to be capable of him, because I can advise these guys and interface with him. First Amendment rights, as I've said before, this is a public meeting. It is not public hearing. Public, nothing in the Kansas Open Meetings Act requires that individuals be heard.
Right, but you're open enough for him to be heard and then you say he couldn't talk and you're saying whatever agreement that is.
So, so we did not open up, we did not open up to public. We had.
I didn't say that. You opened it up and then you speak and then you restricted his speech and that's not the only example. The second example is Michael here. Last meeting I was speaking, you did the same thing when you stopped him from speaking. So you opened it up and then you restricted the speech and I'm just wondering, uh, is that viewpoint discrimination?
Nope.
How so?
This is, this is, this is not a public hearing.
Right, maybe you allowed them to speak and a matter of fact, after, after, after Tom spoke, you opened it up for everyone. You said any other comments? And a lady tried to speak and advocate for him, you shut her down and then again you asked.
We did not.
Yes, you did. Oh, you did, but it's on, it's, it's reported. You said any other comments and so that lady was speaking and you shut her down.
On the agenda, speak on that topic.
She wasn't on the agenda.
She was.
She just started to speak.
She was on the agenda.
And she got moved up. So there was no like, okay, you're, you're next lady. There was, she just started speaking and you shut her down. And then you asked if there was other comments in the room.
Well, we can't, we're not going to sit here and litigate over what happened to me.
Okay.
So you, your, your questions have been answered presumably.
No, what about with Michael? He was in here speaking, did the same thing when you said he couldn't speak. Now is that viewpoint discrimination?
No, it's not. It's because his time, not only was his time limited, but he was actively courting a problem with his drug dealing.
Oh, really?
Because he was being, he was being abrasive and abusive.
And so that's disrupting you?
And I can be.
So you, so part of the restrictions is that when you're gonna open up for people to come in and speak, that they can't be, what was it? Abrasive and abusive? What, what was he doing exactly?
Well, I'm not gonna, like I said, I'm not gonna litigate it when you see, but you guys are gonna do.
I just asked you a question.
Yeah, it is litigation because you guys were willing to do first amendment.
Act of law.
You were willing to do first amendment one oh one. Let's do first amendment two oh one. Explain how that's not unequal protection.
Because it's not viewpoint discrimination.
So you just got that said. Right, uh, Justin, thank you for your time. I appreciate you being here. Uh, your time is up, therefore, uh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You too. You're welcome. Scott just sent an email to the Ferry Ireland. It's okay with what they offered the easement. You guys, uh, have any other questions for Scott?
Nope.
He said, I spoke with Ferry. Uh, he is okay with five hundred and thirteen dollars for the easement. I can get commissioners, uh, I can get commissioners to approve this along the line for the deadline. So, uh, we entertain a motion to accept the offer from, uh, for the easement from Ireland.
Salute.
Okay, so we move to the second meeting for a good schedule. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, so.
Does anyone else have their own two first agents have property?
No, he lives right above there, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, he's over the road. I think you're in the house, but they're.
This is a training assistance agreement, but I, you guys just want twelve?
I believe so.
I think that'd probably best. I mean.
Well, I think it's in a word version, so if you guys wanna.
Yeah, I have the word version.
Somebody can just exercise that and I don't have to worry about it.
Yep. This is information on this stuff. Okay. Uh, have you seen Kansas, uh, Hope Livestock, which issued a permit for animal waste?
Oh, okay.
You know, how they, the, at the Department of Bank does that, so they were reissued. So, and that's the one Jackson County.
That's the only one?
Yes.
There was a guy that came through the list and several across the area.
Several weeks ago. Uh, it's been about a week ago now.
I didn't list them now.
That's. Get all these.
Oh, I said Jackson County. Is that Jackson County? Those aren't Jackson County.
No, I know, but it lists them.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had one.
Yeah.
Harris.
Yeah.
And I, they, uh, listed Kansas River Basin, which I would have thought, you know, Eller River Basin or something, but I guess close. There.
Yeah.
Well, but probably Eller, Eller better, better than Eller.
Yep.
So. Yeah. Tribute to Kansas.
Kansas Basin, right?
What?
Banner's on the Kansas Basin.
Well, it would be, you know, where watershed wherever, and that's Kansas Basin. I don't know because where I'm at for our family is Delaware. This is the main tributary that eventually does go to Kansas. Goes Perry then flows into Kansas River. I've walked many a mile on that river, my youth. Usual. I'm sorry. Triple A danger. That's okay.
Yeah.
Did you know there's a new head of the Kansas General Health? You mean, they told me that they had, they appointed somebody new, bro?
No, we get things up.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie, go to.
Uh, she's not doing it though. She took a job where. Oh, what's the place down there at Sixth Gate?
Laila?
Yeah. She did a job.
Really?
Yeah.
So she's, uh.
I'm disappointed because she was really good. Yeah, she's very, she was, and I almost looked for her to start pushing for something out here on, on the highway.
I know. Yeah, I, I liked her and she, she did a really good job.
Yes, she did. She was a church now.
Uh, yeah, I was, I called the name that he told me, he's on that board. That's the reason. He, he sits up.
I'm sorry, you heard that?
Yeah. Just so you guys are aware of that, that thing that, for Kansas gas service that I handed you, um, you can throw it away. Emergency management, Kate, she, uh, Pat, she fills all that out and sends it in, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Just information only. Cause I asked her about that. Wonder if she's got that plan in place. Good to go. I think it crosses the Elk Bridge. Don't they have a pipeline there on the Elk Bridge there? East town, north of the highway. Did it one time or did they have to go in from area? Do you remember that? That, the story about.
Uh, I don't know where the.
Or is that a deadline?
I'm not sure where it comes into the, uh, building through there. Because there's actually two buildings up along there. There's one right on the old highway and there is one up on, uh, the next road to the north and then just a little bit east. And from there, the pipeline takes off and goes cross country, uh, like I was saying earlier. But I don't know if those two are the same because there, there's all, well, it might go across the bridge because there's also the, uh, there's also the building right across here by the OBM paint shop. But I, but whether or not the three of them tie together, I'm not sure.
All right. At ten thirty, so Mike?
All right, since we've already clarified, if we have three minutes, Christie, if you would let me know when three minutes has expired, I'd like to just have three minutes of uninterrupted government redress. So, last week I came in here and received quite pushback and now I'm being called abusive and what's the other word? Antagonistic or something like that?
I believe it was abrasive in a certain way.
Again, um, three minutes of uninterrupted government redress. I appreciate it, please. Um, but abrasive, aggressive, however those adjectives are, um, there's something called Cone v. California. It's a landmark case from a number of years ago that says abrasive speech is free speech. And so if I was to come in here and say fuck the commission, it's protected speech. Or you agree? I think, I think we can all agree there. So, when I come in and I speak and I'm not being abrasive or aggressive and I get labeled as abrasive or aggressive, it makes me wonder what's going on in the commissioner. Um, the other thing that I've noticed is that we misconstrue the laws and the rules to support ourselves in the bad decisions that we're making. I got told that it was constit- constitutional one oh one. But I'm afraid that this room does not understand content discrimination. Because when you open the meeting to a public comment, you don't have the right to silence that public comment because it's abrasive. Abusive, you may be able to get away with it, but you're gonna need to have some biting words or some actual truth threats or things like that. That's, that's what the law says. So if I was coming here making direct threat to one of you that I was gonna do something after the meeting, for example, that would be something that would be criminal and would be able to be shut down as not free speech. However, when I'm sitting here and I'm redressing commissioners who I've heard actions from in recordings and witnessed myself that they have a disrespect for the community that they're serving, that's, uh, that's disappointing. And Mr. Hoffman, you may not have opened the meeting to a public hearing as Mr. Luckman likes to distinguish between the hearing and the meeting. But when you do allow comment, you're not able to restrict the content of that comment. And the fact that a gentleman has filed a cease and desist or any other legal paperwork, that's gonna restrict private communications. Your, your attorney may be right on that. But that does not have a single bit of fucking impact on that individual's ability to come in here and redress his commission. It does not. Because if you're gonna allow me to be on the agenda, you have to allow.
Okay, now I'd like to make comments, sir, if I may.
No, I'm done. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. I do not appreciate your language.
I don't appreciate.
There's two ladies in the room and I really do not appreciate.
I don't appreciate your content discrimination.
You stop the content discrimination, I'll stop the language.
All right. Your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you.
Well, yeah, we were a minute ago.
And I will apologize for him to the ladies in the room because I do not appreciate that language in here.
You don't need to apologize for me, sir.
Enough.
Tell him enough.
I was not addressing you, sir.
Not addressing you, so just stop.
Continue with it though.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You go ahead and take a look at your minutes and see if you will prove those. And then, once we get minutes approved, Todd, um, there is, uh, attorney flat privilege, uh, we will execute, uh.
Okay.
Session for that. Yep, that's correct. Dave gets to read that. I'm sorry, I have to read this. The checklist, do you check it? Oh. You gotta find it. Do you have an extra?
You gotta do it or?
I had it. It's probably in my pile.
One second. I'll do it for reading.
You can do it then.
I move to go into executive session for the first purposes of.
Wait, hold on. Do you guys want to prove minutes first?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm gonna do that first?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and finish them up and then we'll go into that. And then the regulations. So that way we've got that.
No, you have a.
Probably need to talk about. Second page. What do you think? Oh, about the, the road chip and seal, what the agreement was with that.
I don't know that he's passing the out sheet on it.
Okay.
He didn't report anything to me.
No.
So he didn't have a bouncing.
Yes. Christie's in Lisa, did somebody on her, you know? Okay, I'm ready. There's being motion to approve. Okay. Make a motion to approve minutes to September twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Second. Then we're second to approve discussion. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, yeah, I'm ready.
How long you want?
Uh, fifteen would be sufficient.
So I move to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney plan privilege discussion for a period of fifteen minutes starting at ten forty and reel the meeting at ten fifteen.
Related to. Page one. Thank you, thank you.
You guys got copies?
I did.
I have a copy. You got one?
Okay.
I, I would like to have one.
Did you need it? Would you like a copy?
Yeah, I would.
Thank you. Sure, you're welcome. And so just, just for information for you guys, we're just gonna start walking through some of these. Uh, we have some questions and we just wanna start, again, it's a stacked graph, so we're gonna kind of work our way through it. No time like the present. All right, page one. Anything? Yeah. You have it, Dave?
Yeah, I have to respond back to Marcia. Just checking her. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just checking.
So, my, my question on would be page two, number one, agro, agro, Walcarrot. I butcher it every time.
Yep.
Can't say it.
Yeah, we tend to fast.
Yes. So, my question is, are we requiring, and Mark, I'm asking you this.
Sure.
Are we requiring that it has to be done or are we saying in the regulations it could be done if the, for any companies applying for special use permit has wants to do it?
Well, I think it's in the body.
Yeah, it's in the body. This is just the definition of what it is.
Right.
And.
But what do we get with that? That's my question, Andrew.
Yeah, I think.
And that's where, that's where I haven't gotten to, to read that shit, what we. I'd, I'd like to be able to look at that and certainly he.
And mine was, and I think I wrote it not to be required, which is.
If they can, if we can, we can, but it's not required.
I think it's supposed to be a plus maybe.
Okay.
I don't think it says explicitly like it's brown. That was kind of, that'll be good.
Okay.
If you had a full, if you had a full agro tech plan that you were.
Yeah, I don't wanna develop that. That's not what I mean. I, I mean. Okay, so then if we go to page seven? Yeah, page seven, A. So Berman Highway here is that when, and can you future land used here now as provided and so forth. Do we have this land used here now? Is that something?
Yeah, that's, if you look in your comprehensive plan.
That's in the front of the thing.
I don't know if, I saw it online, so I mean, a separate thing, but basically you'll see it. It looks like a pink, like pink and dark pink thing that's cracked in seventy-five.
Yeah, thank you.
So I assume that that was, that was my start of my, because we're so close to cities anyway, I'd be jumping to higher than that. Probably want to keep those, keep those areas first.
So, we have talked about previously about three mile radius of the city. This says, no system shall be placed if it is within one mile of the city limits of meeting city?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, I'll say this.
Okay.
I mean, I had notes all over the place, different numbers everywhere. And I even have this, I think you guys, Lee made a grid spreadsheet, different values. So, everything I highlight here is me kind of saying, okay, I'm what it was. I'm gonna pick the one that looked like it was the one that somebody wrote down for artists with a pen. Maybe I saw it twice, you know, or if I didn't have a clear number, I picked it. So, not an annual value. I'm trying to give.
Exactly. And that's one of the things that are highlighted in the, what our thoughts are. Um, the acronym C S E C, that's C S?
Mm-hmm.
What, what is that?
That's the big, that's in the definitions.
Would that back up in the definition?
Yeah, it's commercial utility scale.
Yeah.
All or anything. So, so you understand essentially all of this is, is commercial utility scale.
Okay.
The, the, the end of this thing, the part that's not done, or even start this, is kind of what I did was I put a thing at the end saying, if you wanna build a limited scale sort of system, these following things apply and at least the others don't. And there's big blank space. So, the, the last thing we'll have to do is figure out if any of the requirements are going to be for a limited scale. Or which ones are they all?
And the limited scale is no more than twenty acres, I believe. I don't think that's what it was.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there was, uh, having moved for that. Yeah, I, I don't know if there was, uh, having moved for that.
Well.
I think that that's.
Yeah, I think, I think it really, I think it really is, because, um, like, well, just take out on a reservation, for example, what they're using for the hospital and everything, that, that goes to ten, I believe, but we're pulled up to ten acre, uh, entity out there. And so, if the hospital out here wanted to put in something, then, I, I think that, I think it does, it does need to be.
Look at that, yeah, look at that definition and look at where it was, because it was, it just. Yeah, I'm getting that it was, the way the definition read it was like, it was five people that lived close to each other, one or three.
Yeah, like you got over in Missouri along fifty-nine, going to, going to, uh.
Not necessarily, that was.
St. Joe.
Okay.
Okay.
Business, so.
So I, I think that Dan was right, I think that we had said on seven, on page seven, A, I think that we had kind of decided it was a three mile from the city limits.
Do you mind us?
I believe so, yes.
That's what we had talked about, because the farthest, the farthest in any of the regulations that we had looked at, and we looked at like four or five different regulations, we were one point five miles.
There's limits to, both county had two.
So, one of the things, I think, in the conversation that we were talking about is the amount of, how much would the city of Delia or the city of Emmett grow? If we have to look at both.
That we didn't wanna pivot growth in the cities.
Correct. Is two miles too far, is a mile and a half too far? Those are questions that, that I struggle with.
Well, if it's chords with the three mile limit of zoning, or meaning that the city can engage a three mile limit that is going playing, I don't think anybody but whole would have the size of, you know, that they desire to have. Um, but that's, I mean, I don't know, if, again, it's just being, so three miles can be, uh, the change there, probably.
Could be a story, boy.
Yep.
Because again, once this goes to zoning planning, they may have other recommendations. Incorporate the city, right?
Yes, we want. Three miles.
In project extent, one half mile for any other array. Project should not be more than, take up more than seventy percent of the project extent.
Yeah, that's, because that's, that's interior to the project, right? Like, there's one project, and the inside of that project, you know, that's all, one, one of the others.
Everybody still good with the one half mile, that's beginning language, within that?
Yep.
Okay. Moving down the page. Size of system, in order to maintain rural character, preserve agricultural land, so.
Two thousand acres total, and this, and this is one of the rare ones that wasn't a planning commission, but I think that's a significant question.
Right, so we just need to determine, what does that number look like? Because we've heard numbers, you know, all over the place, and, and we have those. I haven't seen anything official until somebody applies for a special use permit and gives us an acreage. I do know that, I believe it's in Virginia, several counties in Virginia have been, made limited to a number of acres in a county.
Well, uh.
Let's see. The biggest one was like three thousand, two hundred acres.
Yep, in Douglas.
And, uh.
I also did Butler.
Butler was a thousand less variance granted, which seems like it's now, escape clause.
But it seems like what?
It's an escape clause, I mean, basically, you can, a thousand dollars is a norm, you can pass for more.
Right? I guess I'm not.
That's, when you add, when you do a variance, basically, you can pass the planning commission grant.
Oh.
An exception, so, what they're doing is probably putting it in the hands of the planning commission to say, you want two thousand, okay, well, that, give that in. As opposed to what you're doing here, you're saying two thousand, and you guys decide, uh, correct.
Yeah, they. Is that still the number that everybody's?
I think, I think literally just two thousand acres is, is a good thing.
Let's see what the feedback did, skip, uh, zoning plan.
Any questions about the five hundred feet minimum from, I'm sorry, um, section setbacks, number seven, page nine? Starting at five hundred feet from any of the res, existing residents, as measured for the dwelling.
Page nine, you said?
Yeah, I thought we had talked about two hundred and fifty feet.
Get down to it, so.
So, and I believe when we were in Iowa, it appeared that the one, that Iowa dash where the offset was in front of the residence, was appeared, I didn't measure, but it appeared to be probably that two hundred and fifty foot mark with trees and other stuff planted, but.
That's the, the, there's a thousand feet in Butler, five hundred feet in Douglas, two hundred and fifty feet in Johnson, and then came, I think the, the kind of mix here is that you got both setbacks and buffering, so. Combine those two, it's a little difference, just having set, setback just means no destruction to your people.
Right.
Buffering means, depending where you go from, that buffering has got, whatever, trees, um.
Right, I thought there was a, a combination of setback was pegged, and then there would be buffering, I think, whether that's farms or trees or trunks or whatever that is.
In, in.
Within that setback.
Okay, yeah, that may be the distinction we kind of get to, is whether we're thinking of setback then buffering, or setback is the big, buffering is probably in there, but it has to be located closer to the, you can't put it like right at the front of the turn with the two, and then leave much blank space.
Right.
Because you're trying to get the buffering close to the panels, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, I thought the buffering would be just on the outside of the fence, there would be a fence around it, leaving enough room for growth of whatever plants were planted there, uh, and that's where it would be. And then, whatever native grass was there, if you planted in front of that, it would be fine, so.
I had thought that we had talked about two on the, uh, minimum setback from residents. I thought that we had talked about a quarter mile on that, didn't we?
What?
I had thought on the setback, B, I thought that we talked about a quarter mile on that at one time.
I think for the project extent.
That was, that's the, this is, max distance between two solar arrays can project. None of that had one of the rules. I mean, I think this happens and happens for setbacks, because I think they're usually seven feet. I remember, that's a quarter mile, thirteen more, yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
That's basically double this, right? Is that thousand feet, thirteen hundred?
Okay, well, I said, I, I thought there was, because one of the gentleman that sent us, uh, email back, way back when, I mean, that was like a year ago, said that he thought that, uh, seven hundred and fifty feet or whatever, and we were talking a quarter mile, I thought on that.
That was dick.
Yeah, dick. I could've sworn that we were talking about a quarter mile. Uh, I mean, if we're, if we're doing that, I would, I would just assume you go with a thousand feet rather than the five hundred feet from the res, from any residence.
Okay.
It's definitely in the thought process, you had a thousand, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Wasn't true.
So, I mean, I'd like to say, I, personally, I would, I would just assume you go with a thousand rather than five hundred.
Yeah.
We have, we have a lesser one for section buildings and.
Yes.
Parking and fire, and whatever.
Right.
So, you don't get that in that.
Yeah, this was just strictly residence.
Okay. Well, we just put another mark there for a thousand, yeah, that's being our, your guys' preference. We change the line to, that's, that's gonna be. I had the road distance, because I thought that was, I'm just setting on you guys already, putting down, hundred fifty feet.
I can't find the residence, some stuff on the panel, residence back eight up till, of January of this year. The buffers, some of the buffers that we had talked about, seventy-five feet previously.
From the buffers themselves?
Now, to, to the line, to the, kind of, the residential lines or the property lines, um. I can't find about residence though.
Well, there was probably two different things, I would.
Yeah, I know, but.
From the property line, or residence.
Yeah, there's a buffer in there too, I know, but I'm looking for the residence, that's why I said I can't find it. That's all, the residence.
Some of the early readings are early information.
I see something that says fifty feet. I see one that says fifty.
Fifty.
Seven B.
Yeah.
And that, this is the, the D is this situation where the project, you know, the project extent is, takes some project areas, actually, they would find, so if you're a landowner in the project extent, which is not, the owner is probably a live solar company out, those are special distances.
But think also in that, that we wanted the ability, if the extent, and there was a landowner who didn't care one way or the other, they could waive, waive that, and be, be within that thousand feet of that.
And I thought that that was up in.
Above there. Interesting.
So how do we handle the waiver? Okay. One, I don't get it.
On seven and a half. I, I thought it was.
Seven and a half?
Yeah, I got it. I could eat a little. Uh-huh. Yeah. Okay, I did.
I'm trying to think, like, put a fee in the waiver process here, because I'm, I'm holding my own reason to think about it. Certainly, you don't, when you don't create a, you know.
Which, which waiver are you visiting with?
Well, that's just it, I think, the wa, we're talking about waiver setbacks and profit.
Oh, right.
Yeah, including landowners, I mean, I see that, and just wonder about, you know, whether or not that's, how that process works, I don't think I had a great set of details in that. Meaning how, and here's my concern, here's a real concern, is.
Okay.
Where's the authority? Authority of planning commission to give, uh, a special use permit, how much are they farming, allocating? Their authority to, to give some of these things, right? That you put it in the hands more of the other landowners than you, than your, than the planning commission, that it's, it's delegating its authority in some of that, if it's not written for it.
Yeah.
If it's not written, if, if, you know, basically, it seems like the ones who are making the decision would be the, the joint landowners primarily versus the planning commission itself, I mean, is the planning commission giving up so much that, you know, these waivers? Are they, are they waving away everything that they're doing, right? I mean, all these rules, you've got all these rules, but if you get ten waivers from the right people, you can do whatever. I don't want that set.
No, I don't want that at all.
Yeah, that's what I mean, there's a, there's a, maybe a happy medium where some landowners give that. The ones I'm seeing there is pretty narrow, so certain chances for them to walk in and say, I really don't waive that. And I don't want that to come, to move or.
So, couldn't it just read that, that they're allowed to apply through the zoning plan to acquire a waiver to be within existing residence?
Right now, it's, it's only in this app, so it doesn't seem to me that this is hot right now, and I don't remember drafting a general waiver.
I don't think there was.
No, I don't think, I don't think they wanted a general waiver or anything.
But that's kind of a, the magic of this thing, B, figuring out those things where you wanna have waivers allowed, um.
I think that would be one.
Yeah.
When you go on down?
We're on ten, page ten, subsection F.
Okay.
But you talked about a different one, I think, so the waiver.
Who's that?
Is that right? I think it's D. Yeah, this is all, D is all. Yeah, this is all, D is all that landowner in the project extend, it's not in the solar company. This is close. So, they, right now, the only waivers, you know. Meaning if you're joined in the outside of the extend, you don't have it. To waive. Figure in a thousand, but, but page. Is that, oh, that's it. I guess the question in subsection, either in ten two is interesting, there's some regs that are going into some great detail about about uh, the buffers, how is that, meaning direct details in urban, how big burms are, and trees, whatever. So, I don't know if you guys wanted to, just saying, you shall, that's what the buffer is part one, and then, completely nothing, so the buffer shall be taking X, Y, Z. I can get you a copy of the, what Joko has. C D D, probably just. You want to be business, uh, going back three annual at this point.
Yeah, I think there needs to be something that they're, they're taught about what, what buffer is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to just leave it, so yeah, put a marker up.
Yeah, but it's three miles.
Okay, well, I'll get, uh, we'll get down to start with those and the meaningful, take a look.
That's right.
Think what they want. Put in a.
Nice to listen. Okay, I think some of those other regs have those definitions in, so don't spend a long time, we can steal it out of one of those.
Well, that's what I was doing, I was just trying to grab, like I said, when I looked at Johnson County, they had a much more thorough explanation of what specifically they were wanting. And that, it's just one of those, we said fourteen minutes. How are you?
Good, just around it, don't you need anything in my office or anything, I'm always walking around. Uh, I talked a little bit about that election room that we have upstairs, I know other offices in the process of being set out there. I did talk about it, and she said we would really like that office, and it's in our office, um, so don't let anyone have their company down in our office without any key cards, stuff like that, because you have private, private records upstairs, so.
Sure.
You have access to. Maybe potentially you didn't turn in an off, office to who are hiring interns and stuff to be up there. Um, so I didn't know if you needed to ask you for that, if that was an end thing, or was the process supposed to be that or what? It's gonna be a while.
Yeah, 'cause you've got to move stuff out.
I mean, you think it'll be ready by January? Do you need help?
No, because right now is where I'm in my busy season, I got a lunch, and I got a task, I have to.
I mean, do you need help with it, is that the basic, like, do you know where it's going, do you just need help with it?
Don't know where it is going, yeah.
Okay, so it's just, I need to figure out.
But some of it, I mean, we have rented offsite space, it's just, what can we take to that offsite space versus what needs to stay here with convenience at their office?
Absolutely, but I knew that they had come up for a little bit and started moving stuff, so I was like, oh, they just kind of do them type of thing. Um, I, yeah, there's some stuff that I gotta figure out.
And, and maybe, maybe, uh, at very, if there's stuff down here in one of the other two areas that they know is going down there, it could be a matter of move this stuff first to the offsite, and then move what's up there down here, just to get cleared out, give it a little more breathing time, is that possible?
That's all I needed to know.
There will be a confirmation of that one contract that's not being removed.
So, I received the draft, um, of what to send them.
Okay.
I'm kind of in the middle of here of trying to figure out what the best way to send that to them.
Yeah.
I don't know if I should ask, um, yeah, it sounded like.
Yeah.
Or I don't know if it just came from you guys, or had to come from us, and then I.
Yeah, I think, let's take the burden off you, we'll just send it.
Okay, 'cause I think, um, I was for, for the end of the draft, are you guys gonna send it to you, to send? Or is, is he, I think? Did you send me a draft from Mr. Hill?
No, I didn't.
Okay, are you able to give that to them? Or however it processes, so he sent me a draft, so you have it, um, and then, but I didn't know if we should wait a little bit longer, just tonight.
Yeah, we're. Well, probably wait till, we have, we need to do it thirty days out.
Yeah, so they send reports, things, um, and so, as long as it's reported, then.
Right. We'll, we'll bring that back up, and, and we'll just set a date, you know, in November, or fifteenth or something.
But I was kind of in the middle, and I was like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't want, we don't want to put you in the middle, it's not, not you, so.
Okay, no problem.
We'll take the burden off you a bit.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and, and if he asks questions, why are we doing this? Uh, instead of waiting on the new, uh, electric fish to come in, say that if they choose to rehire in January.
He's already talked to her, so he already.
Okay.
Anything else you need from us, our office right now, or?
Nope, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, like I said, thanks.
Thank you. Yep, make it sure. Okay.
I, okay, to go back to the.
Well, thank you, we are more.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at my, I'm looking at Joko's.
Okay.
Uh, I, I like the, uh, I like where they're going into what's, what's happening with the burms, landscaping, and everything like that. I think that probably, you know, in some cases, more is better, rather than less is better, and I think this is one of the cases where we want to be very specific about what we would like to see.
For the buffer?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
Get a copy of that, and we'll just kind of check those things.
Perfect. All right. I mean, doesn't need to be as wordy as Joko, because we're not as wordy as Joko, but, you know.
We're not, we're not like a challenge. We don't need a challenge. We've had enough of that. Anything? Anything else that?
Well, like, the five thousand foot view here of things, probably, you know, and or, well, there wasn't, I didn't, on page thirteen, I I really didn't have any details on it, and I didn't know if this is part of it, that there's, there's kind of a, this is the, you know, public outreach portion of the special use permit in the, in the solar company, so here's what we're gonna do. And you can see that, you know, notice and all that jazz. Um, it's just kind of, is, is a requirement to have, for them to have preliminary neighborhood meeting and report on it, meaning, this is not the planning, this is not a planning mission meeting or your meeting, but this, you're still having that, it's just, are you gonna make them go first and go, say, give a notice and run out of four inch wall somewhere and then sit down?
I think that we talked about that, and I thought that we talked about it in, not just here, because they don't.
Yeah, and then the idea being is that you're trying to get them to kind of answer questions, so that people who have basic questions, and they just don't understand it, and go, oh, okay, now you're good. And they don't, they, they're happy, and then it kind of takes a couple bullets for you.
I just, I think it's important to have those meetings early on. The problem is, will you get people to go to it? Yeah, and, and ask questions, uh.
I mean, we had talked about, you know, like, down in the Delia area, in the Hoyt area, Circumvill Soldier area, to have, have the meetings, and have one here if they want to, so, you know, you can, you can vent here.
Yeah, I, I think the difference being, you know, it's always, right now, where is it gonna be, you know, depending on, right? And when it gets real, it's something you say, okay, here's where it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Then, suddenly, what need to learn, to carry or not.
And if they come up and say, oh, well, here for it's gonna be, it might be hell, well, gee, it's not even gonna be that bad, so.
Kathleen. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it be, um, valuable in review to have meetings with anybody who comes in, if somebody, if there's five different companies come in and say, we wanna do A, B, and C on, on solar facility, would it be valuable to you to have some informational meetings put on by them to where the public can ask them questions about stuff, or is that, nah, probably not gonna do that, just go to zoning plan? And I just, I, 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 I know how real this is, so I.
No, I understand, um. I like the idea of people knowing exactly where it is, because then they can see, I think, then you might get more people interested in having more information, when it's very vague, like, this is happening somewhere at some point in time, they don't, they, I think they participate less.
Yeah.
Just because it's, so knowing exactly where it is helps, and I, I can't, I'm only one person, so I can't speak for everyone.
I, you know, I know, but I knew you were here, and I thought.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate you asking me, I like to know more, but that's just me.
Right, and so, I think what I'm hearing you say is, if, if a company comes in and is gonna ask for a special use permit, prior to us sending this draft to zoning and planning, if they would just be bold enough to say, okay, here's where we think, and here's how big it's gonna be, and here's an informational meeting, we want all the public to come so that we can ask questions. That, is that what I'm hearing?
That would be great, um, and if there were, like, an opportunity for somebody to actually ask directly, that would be great, 'cause what they did was, they had people write down, and it'd be nice to get more of, like, this is, you know, I mean, obviously, they want to control it in a sense that it does, they don't want to be all the way along.
Right, right.
So, so I understand that aspect of it, but yeah, presentation, this is where we like it, and then maybe, they probably already have a basic idea of what people are gonna ask anyway, so maybe they could do that first, so that hopefully, most of the questions are answered, and then maybe at the end, if anybody has any additional questions, maybe they can have some time open for that, that seems to make sense to me.
Are we, are we talking about, okay.
So, what I'm, I'm.
Go ahead. It's different than what I think here, right? You're talking about some solar company doing a general presentation, I'm talking, but this is more is to say, we're actually gonna, we, we submitted, we're, we've got a special use permit draft, we know where we've got property leased, or whatever. We go to the neighbors there, right then, and say, this is, this is real, we've got the goods, here's where we're gonna, here's the plan.
Right, and that's what I was asking, is, would you show up for something like that? What you just described?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, that, that helps, that's helpful, but.
So, we'll, we'll flesh that out.
Okay, 'cause I think that's important.
And it's a, and again, it's a separate from the meeting the planning commission would have, or you guys would have, so then.
Correct.
Yes, totally.
You'll hopefully drain a little bit of the misinformation out of the room.
And, and, and to be frank, I think that's part of the problem right now, is across the board, there was so much misinformation, and people don't know, including us, on some of, some of the information, we don't have a full extent of how many people are under. And it doesn't matter, I guess, the full extent of that, but what we need to, we need to do is make sure that regulations are tight enough, that whatever that is the, meaning, they can, if they can fit within that, they can fit within.
Yeah, that's what I would say, if they can fit their business plan within our regulations, then, you know, so much the better, but if they can't, well, okay, I'm sorry. So, and, and, you know, and like, misinformation as far as, well, there's gonna be five thousand acres under glass, and this, that, and the other thing, and well, we just said, no, we don't want to put any more than two thousand, you know, so. It's a lot too much.
Except that the planning commission thinks that's.
They think that under ten.
They fact that out, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so let's save the call, but, yeah, and this is just, you know, we've got to have some ideas here about how we're doing the rest of it, let's see, your weather high points. I mean, your seven is where it talks about budget vision management, maybe we'll take plans, is the budget vision management or agricultural take plan.
Yeah.
So, and, and basically, my idea was that, was that we're trying to, it's erosion prevention number one.
Yes, right.
And if they can, if they can create a plan that actually turns out to their advantage as far as crops or whatever.
Right here, just what you said earlier, indeed, if the facility is not designed to accommodate agricultural takes, that should be stated in the plan, right here, okay. I'm, I'm perfectly satisfied with that, I mean.
And I think anybody who looks at that would say, you know, if you're gonna, if somebody's actively managing ground, it seems to be, you know, better be a little spot, but.
But if somebody chooses to, you know, try to put bees underneath the panels, okay, fine, we'll try bees, see what that is.
No goats.
No goats.
No goats.
No goats.
They would be.
Goats to water. Totes to goats.
Yeah, those panels would accept a chance of goats.
They, but, they jump on them?
Yeah.
Jump on the bees? Uh, probably the big, the other big one here is on page twenty-four. And this is about after it's approved use, like, that setup is there, is that you, you've got somebody on staff of the county inspecting this on a regular basis. And, and that goes into the question of compensation for that, because you guys have to get, you know, a person who's dedicated to that, I don't know, you know, how much time they're involved, it's almost worse if there was only one project in it that was two years ago. Kind of justify, but that's the, the, the real gap here is, how does the county get reimbursed for the expense of having persons who are essentially inspectors of the system?
I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but I believe that when we discussed this, that our, our approach to that was that we would hire a third-party engineering firm to.
Specializes in?
Yeah, that specializes in this, to do the actual inspection, because there's somebody, I'm not qualified, the engineman aren't qualified, I don't think any zoning plan is qualified, so it would have to be a, a third-party entity that would be responsible for the inspections, and holding their feet to the fire on the coke and everything like that.
So, that's addressed in, in one, A, I mean, construction inspection is the same thing, that the onset of this project will have an individual who will be there advocating for the people who live around it, the roads in, in the county, paid for by the county, but reimbursed by whoever puts in for inspection.
Yes.
I'd divide that, I mean, that's construction inspection is number one, and yeah, you've got to have that. And then the next thing is that after it's done, there's a regular period or something comes out there.
Regular inspection that will be coming up for the installation, ground law, like that.
More, you know, soils and, and water and greenery.
But I think also, that would include a, a, a visual inspection of fencing, signing, lighting, uh, come out at night, check, uh, checking for noise and verifying what, where your equipment is.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's important, that that individual then will be paid, the county would be reimbursed, we would just be submitting. You know, so I think that's important, that that individual then will be paid, the county would be reimbursed, we would just be submitting, uh, a bill for that.
Well, that, and that's, you know, yeah, I, I get you, and if it's that way, I was just trying to get the concept, and is, you essentially have, you guys make a deal with engineers.
Correct.
Slash whomever, I mean.
Correct.
And, you know, they're, they're signing a statement that says, we're not taking any interest in any of the companies or investments, then you guys get reimbursed for that.
And I think within this needs to be the statement that at any given time, so if, if we're not being reimbursed, or that individual do it, or that individual finds something, he has the authorities, all, all progress construction, uh, and, and we can pull the special use permit. Um, I think that's gotta, there's gotta be teeth behind it, or we might have.
Well, during these construction phases, it's, it's right there under A.
Right.
But, and after, after it's done.
Correct.
Then there needs to be something in there back in the other one.
Yeah, then, yeah, I guess that, that, there's really a, you know, the right-of-entry issue, there's, you know, a governmental entity inspecting things is always gonna be, I don't wanna get spoiled, you know, constitutional law, I would say, there. The Fourth Amendment concerns about, you know, entering property, but then, I think I put stuff in that says they waived that, so.
Yeah, because let me with this, you know, if, if I get a call from somebody that says, hey, you know, you need to come out here and take a look at this, I wanna be able to go out there and do that, while I'm not an expert on the construction phase, I'm, I'm well-schooled enough that, you know, if they go out, if somebody comes out and tells me, hey, there's, there's a problem, the Kathleen called me up and says, hey, can you come out and look at this, because there's a problem, we need to just take care of it.
You'd have to go with a representative from there, because you're entering private.
Right.
But I think what I would, yeah, and there's, there's always those details, but I'm, I'm backing up a little bit, what I see is being there, there's two, there's the independent inspection part of it, I still think there's a, there's, county's gonna be doing some things that are gonna be over above, because once you zone something, and even a special use permit isn't that big of a deal, I don't know if it goes out, you know, for, for that kinda thing, goes out and has to do with the stuff, even, I mean, you're gonna see some, even if, if it's an inspector, you're gonna see some tangential costs from that, in that zone, so I think, you know, just saying, we're gonna give the way she directly to whatever we pay a third-party, may not cover the cost. So I think we gotta broadly do that, and I think that's, and to my mind, it would be better, that from a legalistic reporting perspective, if a third-party reporting and says, I found a problem, our receives, uh, DC problems, reports into the zoning board, zoning administrator, or you guys say, we went out there, it wasn't a regular inspection company, we saw X, you're the person in the public, you go to them, and they, anyway, they go through there, and that's the party of power that says, we're doing X, Y, Z. Inspector is not put in a position where they have a gap, 'cause, you know, it's pretty soon, they're probably, their insurance is probably falling a bit, if it did. Right, as soon as they stop being, well, I saw this, and I told the police this, they became the police.
Right.
And I, I think that may cause a bit of a heart, stop, you see what I'm getting at, we have a.
Wouldn't it be helpful to know what Johnson County's already doing?
Yeah, I don't know if I looked at theirs, or for that matter, the, the Iowa, the county up there, which was.
Look, oh, look, sort of, no, did you?
Yeah, what's it then?
Look County?
Look County, Iowa, maybe, anyway. Yeah, I'm, I'm going back to my, my whole money groups here about how, I mean, how, how they got sideways is, you had dedicated governmental inspection staff that got insulated from things, and were doing things to draw their power lines. They had a lot of regulations, a lot of power, they didn't have third-parties inspecting, it was all.
All governmental.
Yeah, so you're, you've got the advantage here is that they're separating out that reporting function, that viewing function, because they have all governmental guys coming out there doing the inspections, and then this, say, if I had to finish, so, you know, that, that's where we got it. Well, that's good, that was a benefit.
Okay.
Um, and if you're gonna, if you have that thing, you need to make sure that they keep that separation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We'll take a, I'll take a look at, uh, KyoKo and others, see how they did it, look for any difference. Give us some details about that, but that's what we're thinking of, is how that, if you guys have military costs, how, how do they assess that? Because there's probably gonna be, I would, I would, a core annual assessment for the special use, because you don't know the costs, so you're gonna be ten years. And that's, the other question is the term, how long should it be, the initial issuance of special use?
I have twenty-five, thirty years, I think we talked about that, twenty, twenty-five, thirty.
You know.
Thirty years, I believe, is what the maximum, I think.
I thought we talked about a twenty-year and a ten-year, with an option for a ten-year, I think we did.
We probably did.
You're probably right, 'cause I, thirty-six is my mind, but I don't know what.
That was, that's, that's, that might have been the life expectancy that was stated.
Chris, is one supposed to keep us straight on that?
Yeah, I did find the, uh, information on the, uh, on August twenty-three, we had talked about free mouse reuse from the city boards.
Okay. Well, I mean, if we can start with twenty plus ten, that's a problem.
Yeah. Let's, let's do that.
I mean, technically, what this, you know, the, unless it's restricted otherwise, you basically, I mean, this, usual life, I think it's about period of thirty years, you know?
But also the time, then, it's either decommissioned or recommissioned, depending on what the company and the county wants to do.
They always have the ability to come and get a new one, essentially, understanding the old one and get a new one.
They're really easy to replace, and these are a lot easier to decommission than wind farms, it's either just pulls it around and pull out.
Sure.
So that, you know, kind of, at that point, they probably come in and say, let's get a new one, because you want a twenty-year, really, just pull it out, rip it out, get a bit section, want a new, so you wanna get both twenty years. This kind of exists, too.
Okay.
So, one plus ten, okay. And, I mean, there's something in my notes, and I didn't put it in there, because frankly, couldn't put my head around how to do it, um. The limiting, there's something about limiting the use of this power to the county.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see how you can possibly do that, I mean, that'd be like telling a, a guy out there that's got six thousand acres of corn, you can only sell that in Jackson County, you know, you can only sell that in Kansas, that corn is loaded on a train and shipped all over the country and all over the world. Uh, the, the way I understand it, it will be tied into the Southwest Power Pool and the Jeffrey Energy Center, and sold wherever the need is, so I, again.
Once it's, once it becomes, it's vulnerable, once it gets there, so. Like, yeah, I didn't understand how else we'd do that, so I didn't know.
I was just gonna say, good analogy for it is kinda like a co-op, like you put the grain in, you may not be selling your grain, but your grain is sold. That's kinda like the electrons that go out the grid, once they're there, you can't tell one part from the other.
Right, and also, the city of Holton, which is the only city, I think, in the area that does buy from Southwest Power Pool, wind, solar.
Evergreen.
Water.
Pardon? Evergreen buys, the last I did, I thought Evergreen bought from Southwest, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's through, I think it is through Evergreen, the, they have the transfer station, transfer up near the north in, uh, northern Jackson County, city of Holton, and then there's one up nearby Hospital somewhere, too, that all comes down here. They don't buy all their electricity, but, uh, they buy from water, wind, and solar, through the Southwest Power.
Uh, we should make a count of that, once.
We should just identify just that market.
Yeah, you have to have a whole Jackson County stamp on each of them.
Proudly.
Proudly made in Jackson County, so.
So.
I'd like that.
On page twenty-one, uh, let me see, this bond requirement, uh, I thought that was gonna say.
Escrow, escrow.
Okay, page twenty-one.
Yeah, it should have said escrow, you're right.
Twenty, page twenty-two, check to see, property insurance bond requirement, uh, they have, shall post a bond, which actually can establish an escrow account. So, is that, is that, is that how the process is done, a bond is then to establish an escrow account, not to provide other financial security deemed in the county for equal escrow and decommissioning costs, so.
I personally don't want bond anywhere mentioned in there, because I don't like the way bonds are handled.
Are we understanding bond correctly, a bond requires, uh, a judge to make a determination to re, to pull that?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's a good question about how we're doing this.
My whole, my whole thought was that I want escrow, and the thing about the escrow account is.
Right.
We don't want to, we're not gonna require them to put the full amount in for decommissioning on day one, but.
Why wouldn't we?
Because that's going to be huge, we had talked about establishing the escrow account, and this year, you know, you have five years to fund it.
I'll play the devil's advocate, okay, if decommissioning is a hundred dollars total, and it requires a hundred dollars to get that done, and we say, okay, in the first three years, you'll have to put twenty-five dollars in it, and they go out of business within that three years.
And.
So.
I, well, I, I can, I understand where you're coming from, but you're, you're looking at, for what we are going to require the escrow accounts for, for the resiliency, for the roads, infrastructure, uh, pardon?
I don't, that's different, that's, that's not part of the escrow.
That's different, that's not the escrow, uh, and, and decommissioning, right, those three funds. The decommissioning fund is going to be, uh, in my opinion, probably mind-boggling huge, and, so I'm, I'm, I don't know, I don't know that you can find any company that would be willing to fully fund it in year one.
So how about this, let's at least take a look at what that number should be, um, because I would prefer that it be fully funded day one, because that says to the community that if this is gonna go through, it says to the community that, okay, the money's setting there, if something happens in year two, three, four, or five, and then, on a, on a three- to five-year basis, I don't know how much that is gonna change, because that's something we'll have to figure out, but it needs to be reevaluated.
Every three years, I think, is what we talked about, reevaluating that every three years.
Right, I lean more towards, so let's take a look at what that, what that's truly gonna cost.
Sure.
Uh, to decommission, because they may say, yeah, we're fine with that.
Where are we gonna find that information, uh?
We'll have to.
We'll have to do some digging, see what we find on, on that.
Maybe engineering departments at K-State or places like that. They can laser check that. Surely, surely this wouldn't be the, I mean, surely there are other places that have been decommissioned.
Well, but there, yeah, you've got a couple of factors that are, I'm talking about Reclamation Two, that just moved, about that, the, I think you're talking about restoring the ground.
Correct.
So, that could be, and I, but I get the ultimate question being is, we've gotta get a way that this is insured, right?
Right.
And I agree with you, I, I had the bonding in there, but I know very well, the bonding has its problems, it's an insurance policy, but, and then the related question is, do other terms in the, in the escrow, when do we pull out, who can we pull out, when can we grab it? You know, because any way you look at it, if somebody you guys are interested in that fund may prop up against you and say, well, it wasn't really a violation, I don't want you to take that money to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, we're still gonna have terms, and probably the question being is, does that cover everything the county needs to restore what, you know, property?
Uh, the bonds have been distractively as an avenue for a lawsuit, basically.
Well, I wish, I wish I could tell you if, but I can't, sorry, too many bondholders, too many losses.
But, I mean, if it's set up with a bond, you pay for a bond, say, say it's ten million dollars, and it costs you, costs the company or whatever business is applying for this, uh, six thousand twenty-five hundred dollars per year.
What about a letter of credit, wrote a letter of credit?
But if they go out of business.
They go to business, what's a, a letter of credit, because the bank's signing, saying, we, we will pay you X dollars upon whatever they.
I see.
I mean, still has the bank there, you know, being placed, not wanting to pay out of insurance company, but it's a little bit more A D than, than a bond.
Or, are there insurance companies that insurance is?
Well, I was thinking both ways, because frankly, you guys gotta, need to think about, need your own, you know, insurance policy bond.
By judge, judge.
So, you know, it, it covers your danger, you know, so what's gonna pay you that? I mean, I always have this problem that, what happens if the business goes out, my water, my water districts, right?
Right.
They say, well, we're gonna build this multi-millionaire plant, you're gonna deliver us about paying a million gallons a day, and it's like, wow, we're gonna do that? They see the money, but what happens if that business goes south? And they don't have anybody buying the million gallons, and they're still paying for the, the system.
Yeah.
So you've gotta wonder what your investment is, what is, or like that, so, lots of stuff.
Okay.
All right, well, uh, at this point in time, I think we'll, we'll take a recess for lunch.
Did you have a question? I just have one question, I didn't know if it would be within the special use permit for whichever company about decommissioning, or if it would be within this, but you definitely wanna know something about decommissioning, like how you want them to look after it, is.
Right, and that's.
Okay, I didn't, I, I think it would be, should be in the.
Well, it's, this is in this reg, so it's kinda like your, your upper, if you want more detail on what the decommissioning is, then, 'cause I really don't have a context of what that, that is, other than the dirty basics, right? So.
Again, though, I mean, uh, I'm sure Lynn County hasn't theirs.
Well, I'll take a look, yeah, see what.
Okay.
All right, we've got some meat to, to discuss here.
Yeah, all right. They can, they can.
Randy lives with a son and daughter, and she dies Saturday, she has, they have twenty-four hours, I suppose they did, within twenty-four hours, they did.
Well, no, you can't, public shop.
Because of the, uh, uh, disease factor, I'm guessing, so, Kathleen, how do you pronounce your last name?
McMahon?
Okay.
Like an Ed McMahon?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it two different ways, I've seen some of your posts, and I thought, if you're related to anybody around here, did you go to Lawrence High School or something?
Uh, no, I lived in there, I lived there for nineteen years, but I grew up in Omaha.
Omaha, I like it up there, it's fun.
Yeah.
So, did you go to KU, and then come down here and go to KU?
My husband went to KU, I did it for a little bit, but raising two children and going to school is not.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend that, yeah, yeah, and the kids come first, so.
I contemplated going to law school, but I had two small children and a wife that was at the time a teacher.
Mm-hmm.
New house, new mortgage, daycare was as much as a mortgage.
Yeah, it's really expensive.
And she would have gone ballistic on me.
Yeah, yeah, daycare is pretty expensive.
Yes, uh, back in, let's see, my oldest is forty, my youngest is thirty-seven, and they were, two of them, in daycare, same time, it was five fifty a month, back in the late eighties. And they were, two of them in daycare at the same time. It was five fifty a month back in the late eighties. Uh my, my mortgage is only seven hundred.
Right, it's expensive, yeah.
So I understand. So did you, do you still work? Have you retired or what? Do you housewife?
Yeah, I'm a housewife. I mean, I.
That's work.
Yeah, I mean, we take care of a farm, so I mean, there's stuff to do there, but. Um I also teach healthy movement classes in Rossville at the community library.
Healthy.
Movement classes. I used to teach yoga, but I don't teach that anymore because that's really hard on the body, especially as you get older. So it's more just biomechanics, so knowing how to move in your body in a healthy way. And I work with people that are about twenty years older than me and we see a lot of really good improvement in their move, their range of motion.
Balancing, that type of uh.
Yeah, I mean, strength, you know, strengthening. You're using your body as the weight.
Yeah. Um I'm on Aryan Agents board and they have balancing classes. We'll have them up here too. It's amazing, you know, it.
It's just sometimes you get up and it's hard.
This isn't your friend, this chair, sitting in this position, it's really hard on the body because. The front leg muscles get really tight, so that pulls the pelvis forward when you stand up. So your body. It's really smart and so it knows like, oh, you're gonna sit for ten hours. So getting into that chair position is really easy, but getting out of that chair position into a standing position is hard. And as you get older, your body's a little less mobile and a little less.
So I've noticed.
Supple and so, and it's hard.
I'll drive here to Kansas City where my son lives and get out of car. Of course, I got a small little car or two. And it's a little harder to get in and out of, but I all.
You got a Cadillac.
It's hard to, it's a small one. It's hard to get in and out of. It's not a gigantic one.
If your, if your knees are higher than your hips when you drive, that can hurt your hip too. So if you can get, if you can raise it so your knees are lower than your hips, that's gonna help your hips a lot, especially if you're driving for a long time. Cause I used to, I did have a really small car and it had a stick shift in it and.
Oh, yeah.
My knees were definitely higher and it hurt. So if you can get those knees lower than your hips, that's gonna help out a lot.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I need to get a big truck.
Get a truck.
Get a flat?
Get a truck. Your knees are lower.
Yeah, I like that. Uh if I said Mark McMahon, would you go in?
Mark McMahon, uh in, around here? Probably not.
I, I think he was from like Central Kansas, went to school with at K-State, so.
No, we're, we're, we're from Omaha.
I got you.
So if you know anybody there, probably. Irish Catholic family, so there's a lot of us.
Yeah, some of mine.
And I think the church kicked them out probably, but maybe King, Methodist and Lucrels.
Right.
I don't know if that helps any, Todd, you know, but I, I, unless. Adhere to the state laws versus.
Well, I don't think we're regulating. Treatment of body versus, well, I mean, the land.
Uh and I think you have to have a container, no matter what it is, homemade. But I don't think you can bury someone in a, what, sheet? I don't think you can.
Can mommy find it?
No, don't think so.
No, because of leakage.
Well, you should take care of that, of course, like, it's like you know, find organs out, picking up shards.
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, that's. I, I was just thinking about it this morning, there's something like, uh must adhere to all state laws and all the burial.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough to learn.
I mean, I don't know anyone's got a blood monitor, but. Unless. You got a neighbor said, hey, something funny going on over there.
So what's really popular right now is basket weaving, um willow basket, caskets. I will never do that. I, I, I am a basket weaver. I made this basket right here. But uh, yeah, they want, the, people really wants wicker baskets, I, I mean, as in like your coffin.
I know, I know some people that have paid to have a actual wooden coffin built for them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I remember their wicker baskets.
Yeah, you have to look it up. It's, it's a thing. My teacher said she was never gonna do it.
They're trying to build, they're trying to sell someplace where you get buried with a tree, so.
A what?
Like a tree, ball, dirtball, and you're buried in it, so the tree grows up on the side of you and. No, you're not involved or anything, so the tree itself, you know.
That's what I'm doing. I'm doing deeds all over here.
Yeah.
As you said, uh Regulate makes wooden coffins. Uh I've seen him do it, uh he uses a lot of private Native Americans uh for wooden coffins. Yeah. And they're really good looking coffins, so he does a heck of a job. You know, you touched on something that I'm gonna recommend to the hospital board.
What's that?
Well. To.
No, wait, you're not touching one on the board.
I'm done. No, but I could still recommend those. No, Wednesday was my, Dave and Bobby in Roseville last night. Let's see, fifteen, thirty minutes and we're done. Um. You hit on something that this sounds really, what they need to do is go out and research. How much they have on electricity, I suspect, it's kind of. Want to see what it costs to put in a solar panel and that's fact.
Well, within, within several.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, and go to the neighbors that are down there, which is.
It's the same thing on Drive, yeah.
Yeah, which is Marrows and uh the lumberyard and the vet clinic and flags. Or what is it now? Uh three acres.
Yeah. Yeah, good point. So I mean, the thing is, how they have to borrow underneath seventy-five highway across the.
One, no, I've got another thing on the west side. Everything on the west.
Yeah, they could do that, I would think. Now, city.
Like, let me say, if you would do.
High.
Have you been down the byway you keep saying, Alex, you're actually wrong. If you look at those communities, that is a wonderful community. They have, several of them have.
Harbinger.
Oh, I'll be here this evening. That'll be fun bar. She comes up.
Houses too.
Yeah. Like, the whole complex, they got two white houses.
Yeah.
Discussion.
I'm in there.
Cause I got a discussion anyway.
From the public.
Yeah.
And I thought.
We'll see how it might.
And you know what, as a, as a hospital facility, color?
There you go.
I'm gonna tell you, lose everybody else in, so you're, you're involved in.
Interesting.
I need to tell you.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, good point. Where'd you put this on?
Yeah.
We have a circle.
Maker?
Maker. How goes it? New York, finish the back end section.
Good weekend. Well, it's very busy, perfect camping here.
Yeah. Cool. A lot of people out there. And uh was uh. Kind of unexpected, but it, it, we'll get, we'll get a lot of these weekends though. I mean, you, when you get that nice weather pop up, it'd just be. I mean, a lot of them will book their day off, which is counter-rational, which is not seen with the West Side.
Probably more long weeks up tomorrow.
Yeah.
Do one.
It is.
I uh, I got some bids here. For uh, I'm looking ahead for next year, but I'm ordering now, for one to.
Oh, okay.
We should order now. These are from three different uh dealerships that are, um with, as you'll notice, trying to make different results for the same thing.
All joined in. You have to go pick it up related to whether.
Oh, no, I'll have a, I should. We got to tell them right when I'm here. I uh was rather taken back by all of the, this question to the fact that, you know, we bought our last two from Heritage Peak. And they were that far off, just, I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at this first one.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah, look, look up where you put it says. Used equipment sold is, is this is brand new or is this used?
Yeah, that's just, I think, a statement.
Is that just a statement on there?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
Yeah, cause if you look at the suggested price over there. And uh, and I didn't, I went through and looked at the extended, I didn't, you know, attach all four or five pages of each book. Um because that is, it's making sure they all uh have the same uh. Things on, that sort of thing. Yeah, they all, they all have the same engine, they all have the same deck. They all have the same uh airless tires, wheels on that we use out there. That ends up in the grand scheme and things pretty nice with us with our warranty and how it works out. In about three, in about three years, we're getting hours on them where they're getting, starting to start to get into some cost of repairs. A prime example is, you know, that one we have right, out there right now at nine seventy, or it's got eight hundred and some hours on it. It lost a, a left eye check on it, so I mean, luckily that being under warranty was all covered.
Did John Dear you ever check on the extended warranty on those?
Oh, no, that was on the side by side. Yep, I was able to get that done. And I, and got that all uh figured out. I ended up uh was able to extend the condition for years back.
The other two didn't miss on trade-in?
No, I, after seeing what they wanted for the first, on the first one, I didn't even bother with the second two, so I'm just gonna sell myself.
Okay, what do you call it?
Or, and it's just the wrong time of year or two, so that's why I've got it sitting out by the road and it went inside a bottle. Put it away to the spring, put it back out, I got no issues of what it will, what it's worth and uh they told me, you know, what it's worth. And you're gonna sell yourself. And uh we can also put it on purple way too. Last one, they got off again.
Results on purple way, boy. Which one do you have because we want?
The, the first one, we have the Iowa implement, probably be right, turn what I'm, I'm gonna implore today.
Iowa, I thought Iowa, the implement, Perryland, getting together or assigned or, which one is Iowa implement in?
Uh over in Missouri, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, for north, right on the river.
Saint Joe?
No, it's not Saint Joe.
They're not a partnership with anybody, I don't believe in that.
No, they just got another dealership. They, but I think they extended, I don't think, I don't know if they purchased that one or they, but they are.
Yeah.
Kind of like Perryland was trying to go in and, you know.
In Iowa, it used to be Miller, then it was something else. I lived in Iowa, that was Miller, then there was a B and B in Agasson. And we can't remon- I remember, it might have been a hall in Saint Joe, but they've all sold, merged. Harry, is Iowa, is that right?
No.
Heritage Peak.
Harry, okay, Harry. And then there's another one up in that area too.
But, so I mean, so here, the thing is that, that they were, they were out and they were open with me. And I said, look, I don't want this warranty till April next year. I'm willing to commit to it this year. So you want to disagree the order and, and everything, because I don't want to start my warranty and have to sit here through the.
Remember, Joe.
Right, I already put this in my budget to do this this year and I told them that, but I'm just saying, you know, I can commit to a screw up purchase order. And they, and, and both uh outside of Heritage Peak, they, they were able to, right away say, yeah, not a big deal. We can get that for the warranty to start, you know, when we deliver the mower in March or April.
Take them around the front?
Yeah, and we can pick it up, because they got ordered anyways and, you know, it's, it probably not, won't be delivered until Januaryish, they said, so.
But they will, they will commit to the price?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's, but I'm gonna, I would go ahead and just get that taken care of. Uh and so if my group was for uh purchase the Z nine nine four out of Iowa, it'd be something thousand.
I'll leave.
Second.
Good, second for your purchase, uh John Dear mower, Iowa implement, the amount seventeen thousand dollars even, all thirty thousand.
Aye.
All forty thousand.
I think that's, I mean, they're all free here. What we need to get back into that diesel mower and rescue and.
All right, it starts on delivery or you have to pick it up or whatever?
Uh I'm on delivery, I'm assuming, it's not that big of a deal, as long as we get it in the next year, I'm that way. I don't mind burning a month or two if they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, what do we got?
Not that we're considering.
They're all free. Exactly. And one thing I hope you notice that, that, that is a diesel mower. And that is something that we've been, they generally always ran out there, you know, just because of the, the amount of hours that we're putting on. In a day, um the fuel consumption numbers are gonna go way down for us. Um but through COVID, you know, we saw an, an extreme rise in, you know, diesel engines and the availability of them just wasn't there. So now that we've kind of pulled that a little bit and prices are, I mean, it's, it's that, that's pretty well what we paid for the, uh. Before trade-in for that gas one that we have right now.
Yeah.
You know, three years ago, so.
Okay, that was very cool.
Um I'm looking for an ice maker right now, so that'd be another thing that uh I'll have to, because I'm going to try and purchase one for the new building. Whether it's rented, like I do up, um I've got some ideas, uh I got some quotes from Easy Ice, uh out of Pika. I have no idea, I mean, purchase one, how expensive they were.
Very expensive.
Yeah, eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's way up. So I'm looking at other options, you know.
Buy a lot of bagged ice.
Yeah, well, but you know, I look at it this way, you know, I personally, at the office rent one for two hundred and. Uh it's two hundred and forty bucks a month and I sell the ice up there to, to justify that to a certain extent. But down here, that's just something that, you know, you're gonna need it at the event center, that's a lot, it's, it's a lot harder to stomach that. So I'm looking at other options. It's maybe, uh on the line.
How big is the one you have now?
Uh it's got, it'll do five hundred pounds in twenty-four hours, but it's got a three hundred pound hopper on it.
So it's a pretty good size.
Yeah, it's just pretty size. I mean, to do one at the same center, but uh you wouldn't need one near that big for the event center? No. No, no, that's, uh I mean, the only thing with, if you have back-to-back events, you know, but it, I'm, I'm not. The way we're looking at it right now is, it's gonna be a twenty-four hour turnaround anyways, so you should have.
I, I, if I were you, I'd probably go up and look for one out of Heritage.
Yeah.
The one they've got in the kitchen out there?
Yeah.
That's probably as, as big as you're ever gonna need for.
Yeah, the uh, I, I, I need to see which one or where they got, I mean, because I do feel like for that, for the better, we're all the others purchasing for down there. Yeah, being, I mean. Because I can't just buy out another, you know, two hundred some dollars, you know, and splitting that up and then trying to make it to where all your. Cause you don't know how many times you're gonna rent it to try and.
Yeah. The uh one that you got that you rented for the lake, uh they maintain it? Come clean it once a month?
Well, I mean, they don't do that because I only keep it for just seven amount of months. So I mean, they, they come and clean it three in a year and if anything's wrong with it, they'll come.
But they pick it up.
But they pick it up and take it again a year and.
And you go through. For how long? Nine months?
Uh no, usually five months. And then, I mean, where I'll need something a year around a year because people.
If I were you, I would look at uh having them come and clean it at least once during that time. And when I say clean it, I mean, run the cleaner through it, if you're hot or out, run the cleaner through it, run the sanitizer through it. Take everything out of it and, and as far as it gets, the ice making gets and wash it. Because speaking from experience, I took our dinner a month. Because the mold and, and dirt and stuff gets up in there and it gets pretty nasty. So I'd, I'd look at having them do it at least once during that time period.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, that's what, uh. But no, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, at other options, uh you know, there, there's other, I've got some commercial ones that, you know, I found in public. Uh Vior is what, out of them for around sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars, you can purchase one that's got a three hundred pound. around sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars, you can purchase one that's got a three hundred pound, you know, hopper on it, I mean, if that thing makes it two years, you know, you favor yourself on, whereas that's essentially what I'm paying every year to, to lease it and not getting any, any return on the ice. So there's other options out there that, that I'm, uh, looking into on that. Um, where we got the concrete board for the building, uh, out front, so for the, uh, the handicap stalls.
Yep.
And, uh, thinking, I think it's been, uh, pretty damn close to being wrapped up. I think we're, we're gonna have to decide, you know, if we can get together and get a group together to clean it at the end, to save a little bit of money. Or, you know, if we got, as of right now, looking like, I'll, except for the, uh, even there, where we went with, uh, we're gonna come in, we're gonna write it on the, on the bill or something.
Good.
Through some things, uh, that I've taken on and Mark has taken on to, I'm, we're trying to get everything seated down right now. Originally we'd put, you know, money in the bed to have some, come in and seat it down, but, I'm just gonna try and do it myself and, you know, save, save a little bit of money or we can, then put that towards an ice machine or something, but, and, uh, but, I don't know, we're just, we're getting, we're getting a little closer, um, and I told you last week about Prairieland and we should be getting some money from them, uh, for their charitable foundations, very appreciative of that. And, uh, so I've got to get a, commercial woodwork fridge and some back for that and then some tables and chairs, so thank you. See, uh, or know of any organizations who might be, upgrading their tables and chairs or something like that, that we, you know, should keep ears open. Yeah.
Is that who you guys use or who do you?
Um, I purchased ours through, um, that's been so long, hasn't it?
Right.
No, I, I, but I have, I have bought things through them, through this one here.
Um, yeah, I just found it through, through this company, uh, that's just the, the bin, huh?
What, their?
Yeah.
For the ice bin?
That's just the bin. Like I have the main on top of that.
They have, uh, some of these are this size.
They're, they're all, but they're all one, yeah, I know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep. Cause I might have looked at the one at the, uh, the, the first United Methodist Church there, cause they have, I think it was around around a three hundred pound, two, three hundred pound.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, you know, if you're back around the map, if, uh, think of any thing, which is, you know, on the ice machine.
And, uh, we'll just try and look at where we, uh,
if you look up that B more, if you look at, uh, ice machines, see, that's what I found, they're pretty, they seem to have pretty good reviews.
Whatever you do, you want for the filter on?
Yeah.
Definitely.
And, you know, learn, you know, and I, I have been a lot just because it is theirs and they, you know, are supposed to come in, you know, take care of it and anybody, it'd be a whole different story, you only want to see them talk that.
But like I say, just ask them or look at your contract and see what is in there that they're supposed to clean it. Cause we have, uh,
I know they take it apart and everything and it's clean, you know, at the start of season and at the end of the season, you know, and.
I would.
We're a company that we use that was, that we rented the ice machine, our first one in there and, uh,
Now, did you guys own it or rent it?
We rented it, the first, first one. And then when we.
It's a lot more apparent for someone like you guys that are using it to make money and have to have it.
I mean, if I, if, if I were to break down for a couple days, even a week, that's not the end of the world, because I'm not using it to make money. I can go downtown and I can buy a few bags from Walmart just and, and. So, that's, I think if I owned one, my end up financial term.
You can get a couple of years out of one, you're already money dead.
Oh, yeah.
Whereas I'm instead of paying fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
I would be, on the B more, I think what I would do, uh, if you're looking at that, is look and see what parts availability it is. Because the, uh, solar valves, uh, they do, you know, go, uh, other than that, like,
Like I said, you can get one a year out of them.
Yeah.
You can literally buy one of those every year.
Yeah, I mean, so if you did a couple of years before something major goes wrong.
Right, that's, I mean,
Oh, no, I, you know, I know.
For one of these.
Yeah.
I didn't really sit, I mean, for this, unless you have to get started how it did.
It didn't make sense to just not have to worry about it, but now that we're kind of established selling ice ourselves, you know, I think, I think we can look into other ways to, because as, as it sits right now, it generally makes just about enough money to break even.
Sure.
So, uh, so it's more of a service than a offer and, uh, it's a convenience for your folks out there.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, thanks, buddy. Appreciate it.
Alright, Todd. Back up to that.
Okay.
Sure, make sure it didn't fall over. So what do we, uh, I don't know where we left off when we improved the place or we just, more questions? Bring Ali up to speed with what she was doing.
I think we left off about twenty-four page, twenty-four, I think.
We were on twenty-four.
Yeah.
We were talking about escrow and bond and.
Yeah, that was the last thing we actually.
Just because it's gonna cost. Too many words. Well, you shouldn't have lawyer, right, regulation? But you got it right. Put in a paragraph.
I think you should just, you know, you can get a social section in the paper if you need to, you know, write all these. We need to just.
Everyone give a summary of what we're.
Oh, I think you need to read people's word.
One of the, one of the things that we had talked about at the beginning of these would be a, maybe on the, you know, recovery page, then the next page would be like twenty bullet items that have been customer, from, from taxpayer, resident concern. Um, and those would be something that we would want to put at the beginning of that, Todd. I'm sorry, what was, twenty? Yeah, like twenty bullet points. We had, I'll, I'll find them here, there were like fifteen or twenty different things that have been brought up. So if you start out with a page that says, um, for instance, decommission, that was something that was a big concern. Um, how it's gonna look, or, you know, those types of things, they were just concerns, if we had a dress.
Appendix, like I said. So, so they, they actually went ahead of the, uh, I've got Johnson, Johnson County where, they actually went ahead of the, uh, definitions. And that's just how the, these were the major concerns that, you know, we were looking at and it kind of went ahead in the definitions. And that, I'm not saying that that is the ones that we were doing, but that is how they did it.
It's, it's a temp literate fusion idea of what I'm talking about. Yes, ma'am. So, we're already, we're already, I know, I know, we're just, once, we're back on. We're gonna eat this elephant one bite at a time.
Yeah.
What you got?
Neighborhood revitalization, I had a question. Somebody just came in, they, unique situation. They had an existing slab. It was not a house. It's just a slab next to a barn. They want to build a house on it.
Okay.
We, I didn't know, Jamie didn't know about the slab, I knew, you know, the neighborhood revitalization application, they handed out all that. So, the discussion was neighborhood revitalization and is it new construction? Or a neighborhood revitalization, since it wasn't a house, since there wasn't anything on the slab?
No, I, I'm not being smart like.
So.
How long's the slab been there? Is that the first thing I'd ask?
I, for a while. It's, it's, I don't know.
There's a barn on there?
It's next to a barn.
So it could have been a basketball court or a big, big.
My thought would be new construction. Since it didn't have an existing house.
Correct.
Or structure on it.
That's the way I would see it.
My question is, normally it's, uh, we don't issue neighborhood revitalizations if there's a foundation, well.
If the foundation's already poured, we don't.
That's, that's what was my, that's why I was asking how long this slab has been there. Uh, is there any way that we can find out? I mean, this, you're right, this is a huge, unique situation. Um, I, I think that that's number one that I want to note is for last year, then no, that's, that's totally out. If it's been sitting there for five years, ten years, then I'm, I'm willing to look at that and, and take this on a case, a case situation.
How long is, how long have they had the property?
I don't know.
Yeah, did they buy it and the slab was?
Um, I, they, they have owned it or they may have owned it. I don't know for sure. I would guess they may have this one. Um, we, we also have another situation where, somebody recently bought a property that had a foundation for. Um, they got a permit for it and they were in a new neighborhood revitalization. They halted after the slab was poured, they sold the property. So there is a foundation there that the new owners are wanting to be building on. To me, that's.
Yeah, that's, to me, that would be acceptable because they didn't, they didn't pour it and then go, oh shoot, we gotta stop, let's start over again so we can get revitalization.
I'd agree with that.
This would be a new construction scenario.
Yes, I, I agree, I agree with that assessment there. Yeah, the, the thing that I'm puzzling on on the slab is in order to get services into the slab, you're going to have to help the slab. So that's why I'm curious how long it's been there and how long they have owned it. I think that's the first two questions I need to answer before I, I can make a determination on that.
Like if it's stubbed up with plumbing and all that, it's roughed in or?
Yep, if it's already roughed in.
Then no.
No. That's not me.
So if it's just a slab and they're gonna have to cut the sewer line and water lines and all that, then you're good with it?
I was thinking the same thing. You asked the same thing, need more information on that and the other do as well. I think did the best I could.
Because they recently purchased the property with the foundation.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
New construction on boat if they vote for all of that.
If it was a basketball court with no, uh, plumbing, sewer, water.
But if it's, yeah, they're roughed in.
Yeah. They don't have those, they have those seaters, right, that screw in parts and, you see the foundation.
Right.
They have those.
Sure, but that's, that's roughed in though.
Yeah, if they had that, that was, that's difficult.
I mean, my building out there, it was roughed in for water when they built it, but nothing's ever been done because there's no electricity in the water.
Okay. That answer all of your questions?
Does that answer all of my questions?
Yeah, I thought you were looking at my recs there, that's why I was saying, we're gonna take our time.
Yeah.
Dive in. You're part of the conversation, so what do you, you want? So, yeah. She didn't, doesn't see on this. Uh, the solar, she didn't see on that. Yeah, you can read through it. You have questions? Twenty-eight page, pure fun.
So this is it?
Not, not the.
Well, no, I'm.
Get the draft.
Yeah.
Get that.
I don't know, I'm sorry. This is not it.
Yeah, it's a long way than draft.
This is the start of it.
Yeah. We just walked through, so.
It's kind of.
Feel freedom.
We're gonna.
Five thousand foot. I guess maybe the question we're working on, we're talking about is authority would, if there was a continuing duty to inspect these properties and you had a third-party, um, person who was an engineer who was going around and looking at it and they would report to you to say, you know, everything's good and then in the rare case, well, this is not good, this is a real problem. Would that be your preferred setup for enforcement of that going forward?
That would have been one of my questions that I've had in this whole thing, who's doing the inspections, how often, um?
No, I didn't want to. I'll let you.
The, the, I think the station we have, it's set up to have the inspections, it's probably not clear that it's a third-party that we're talking about. And the only disconnect is how do you make a third-party, how, how do they have regulatory courts that they can afford? They, they would, as you said, they would report it back to us, we would be the regulator, we would send somebody out to, and, and I think that's important that we have a contact person with whatever company it is so that, uh, when that's reported to your office or, uh, however that's reported, we can say, okay, here's the issue, need to stop right now and let's take care of this before we do the head. Yeah, and that's kind of the, the basis of what we'll do is that the plans are made by a third-party.
So I, I think that the, I think that the third, the person the third-party would report to would be you. And then you'd report to us, yes, let's fill, keep a win.
Well, let's take that a step further though. If, if, if the zoning planning office is gonna be the reporting office, I say you hire somebody who works within your office, but is the individual who will go out and say, okay, their, their main scope of work is gonna be to handle these complaints. And we just hire somebody and they're gonna have to reimburse us for that so that we have somebody on staff, our staff who is the one that's going out and making contact with during construction with whoever the job, job site superintendent is. Here's the issues, here's what needs to be done, if it's nothing done by this name, here's what happened. That's a possibility, having somebody.
So you're talking about hiring an engineer?
Well, I think, I think I've got two separate things in mind. I'm, I'm post-construction. Okay, even post-construction, having somebody within your, who would not be an engineer, we would hire a, a third-party engineering firm. So if Mark is that engineering firm and he comes to me and I'm working in your office, he says, look, here are the violations that I'm seeing, here's a couple of issues that I'm seeing. I take those, I go, okay, here's what we can do, now I'm gonna make contact with whatever company is managing that. And then here, I'm gonna make contact with them and say, And then, here, I'm gonna make contact with them and say, these need to be fixed, you may have eight days to fix it. If it's not fixed within those eight days, here's what's gonna happen, we're gonna employ your SEC. Having somebody on staff here, I think, would be important because there's accountability, they can, you know, a third party can't hold it accountable like we do. But that would be paid for by whatever company that employs, salary would be reimbursed, so it's a suggestion.
And that would, to me, that would be through the life of the project, not only just the construction, the post-project also would be thirty years, supposedly.
Correct.
So you're wanting additional person in our office or just for solar?
No.
No. But that would be their, that would be one of their duties.
That would be one of their duties, that would be their primary duty, and it wouldn't just be for solar. It would be any kind of regulation that isn't being followed, but especially if we have a, a solar facility in this county, that would be their primary job. But if, if on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there isn't Friday, there isn't anything to go inspect, they could work in your office if you see fit.
So how do you do all the things that we?
Special projects.
Yeah, but the training for someone like that, the logistics of that's gonna be, encompasses a lot, you got, you got civil, you've got environmental, you've got mechanical, you've got.
No, 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 no.
What's a hired engineer for?
The engineer.
So how are they gonna be, this person that's gonna come from her office, how are they going to know that's very?
The engineer comes and tells, tells the person from her office, says, hey, look, we've got problems with, uh, we have problems with, let's see, we'll just say the, uh, screening in one area, part of it's got blown down, part of it's dead, whatever.
Okay.
So the person from her office goes and gets the regulations that are passed, they're supposed to follow, and it says in there, screening shall be maintained to blah, 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 blah. Civil English, right? Then they go to the, whoever the entity is.
Yeah.
And say, uh, we have had a complaint and here's what's happened, our engineering firm has identified this problem in the regulation, do you read the follow-up? It's here, 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 you need to take care of this, you have eight days to do it, otherwise we pull them up.
Do you have in your office someone now, or are we gonna have to hire someone? I mean, you don't wanna throw, you don't wanna throw additional work on the staff we already have. If we're gonna have somebody in this, working for the county, it would have to be somebody that we're hiring additionally and making them pay for it. But this isn't a job we would normally have to do, only because that facility would be here, would we have to have somebody?
Yes.
Did you have thought on?
Well, you know, I think generally that, I, I'm just wondering, you know, is, is, almost like, is this warning that? Because if you only have one application or two applications, is that, uh, you got other things to do, I'm assuming, so it's, I just, ahead of me a little bit, but. The other thing they could do too is that they, they would field a public comment. I mean, it would be like a complaint box for, and, but you, you know, you got an age here, it's a third party, you check, they're supposed to not, I mean, I don't think he's supposed to be taking complaints.
No, no, no.
He, he or she's supposed to, you could go out there and say, I know what I'm doing, this soil test is bad, but there's probably somebody that this thing takes off, but we need to be able to have a public call then and say,
Right.
Check it out.
And I think that's the other piece of it, is having somebody within the county that is contacted.
But I don't think it requires, you know, engineering, that would be required.
No.
Probably require, you know, psychological counseling.
No, Danny Brown's going.
But, but the other thing too, the other thing too, would be, if we hired somebody in your office and that was their job, and they said, okay, I'm gonna go out and take pictures, I wanna look at this. Well, let's just make a phone call and say, okay, engineer, meet me at this side at ten-thirty, I want you to walk me through what you're seeing. There's your technical advice, I'm just the authority that, that gets to hold the company, whatever that company that might be, accountable.
And that's, I'm assuming that's an active regulatory idea, meaning, like I said, you don't, I'm, I'm assuming you don't check every six months that somebody's doing a special use permit after they build it?
No, not unless there's a complaint or there's an issue or something.
So we're, we're, this is more proactive concept, which is, if somebody's coming out there and actually, whether or not anybody's complaining, there's somebody who is who'd go out there.
So the official in the office for that is me?
And that's what it says in the regs, it says in the reg, right, man, it says.
So, hiring somebody specifically for solar, I, I would technically still need to be a part of that because my name's gonna be on any document that goes out, right? That person could go there and report back to me and send off whatever, whatever, whatever with my signature or whatever on it.
I think it needs to be, to contact people, it needs to be more than just send a letter, wait ten days, hope you're blessed. It needs to be, there needs to be a person at the other end of the phone somewhere available.
Would be me in the office?
Right, but I'm talking about on the other end.
So I'm the engineer?
Yeah, I'll send you this, now, on the, the company, whatever company it is.
Yeah.
If you have something working in your office, they go out and they verify the, the problem. And they come back to you and say, okay, here's the problem, here's where it is, here's what we need to do. You need to be able to send both, written form, but you need to pick up the phone and say, look, your eight days starts today. I'm sending you a letter, but your eight days or your five days starts right now.
Okay, so you're thinking, would it be good to hire somebody to do that kind of?
It's a suggestion, yeah, it's a suggestion of a way to have somebody to hold people accountable.
And I think what we're trying to do is get from the other end and say, if we put this in place, we need to have compensation from regulated entity to pay for third-party inspections and whatever the cost of.
So if you do your, your. To me, it's not any different than them paying for ongoing cost of maintaining roads or tubes that deal directly with this, that we normally wouldn't have to. Yep, I'd like to ask a question here. I see that side of it, your side of it, do you need a third party, another person that responds to you? But could we cut through that and just say, an engineering firm, which is a third-party, independent, contact you directly and not have someone special in your office to do that?
Well, it depends on how big this gets, right?
Right.
So, management-wise, um, I don't have enough time as it is to do the appraisal stuff. And I tend to do more zoning now than I do appraisal stuff. Currently, I'm supposed to be focusing on appraisal. Having somebody additional to do zoning would be incredible.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, is this person gonna be at full-time and on call or something?
Uh, full-time.
Why?
Full-time.
So not just solar and the.
Right, so you don't need to, so there's special permits.
Special permission use.
Or, or you just wanna call up your zoning person that reports to you, what, whatever you think, but it's, yeah, your workload with everything is too much. I'm talking about your personal workload is too much, and we've heard this a lot from you. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna dump this on you, so Kate, you're sorry. We want, we want to be proactive and get this into regulations and get it in there correctly, so that we get you some help, because this is gonna be a big, you know, it's not gonna be a, a six-month project, you're gonna be done. You know, if this, if this comes to fruition, it's not gonna be a six-month project and you're gonna be done and walk away. It's gonna be an ongoing project that if this person is in your office already, they can deal with that, they can deal with others' only regulations that you don't have time to do, but they still report to you, you're still the boss.
Well, my point behind that too was that ultimately, it'll be my name on whatever going through the cell.
I agree, you need vital say.
Yep.
Of, of what you're.
I'm sure you want me to come to you instead of this other person, or?
Well, it depends, it depends on what it is, it must, it probably, it might be planning permission first or all we need.
That's a good point.
Issue, but it's, you know, it just depends on the magnitude of the issue. But I think if somebody, for example, right now, if they had a two thousand acre facility and wanted to go to three thousand, that goes right to you. But, and so, it's, at least as far as the regs are, because they got an exception to the two thousand acre limit. So, but I would expect if somebody, you know, wanted to do a minor change in plans or something like that, that we just go to the planning permission, that's good.
Yeah, and I think, I think.
Where is the special here?
Yeah, it could be like an enforcement officers that a lot of the cities have, that have either tied up some kind of county enforcement officer moving forward.
So we would probably want somebody with some.
Enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a minute, you alerted me.
Yeah.
In the, in the code?
Yeah, if they had code experience, they would have thick skin, the universe would be very good.
Yeah, they're gonna have to skin like an elephant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So pretty equal, I think.
So.
Eat elephants, right?
They're equal among the dying, right?
I guess, if you get back to the regulations, we can write in that Jackson County will hire a, an individual at the cost of X, Y, Z, and that will be included in the road maintenance, where, where, what's.
I think actually that would probably be, there's a, just assessment.
Yes.
Wherever that section is in here. And then, you train them, you know what you want, you know what you're looking for, and they answer you. It's, uh, page twenty-four, there are three.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
Complaints. Yeah, that's a good idea, if you come from the road budget, so to speak.
And that's just the, the idea there being is that you're, you're monetizing administrative costs to the.
Absolutes.
Body.
Yep.
In, in all phases of this.
Yes.
As opposed to a tax.
Correct.
So.
And there would be additional things that would be monetized, I mean, I mean, we haven't even begun to talk about paying like the little taxes within the regulations and how that process would work.
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's important to keep those concepts separated, not because there's a different legal test for taxes versus administration assessment.
Yep.
For the regulatory side of this, that's why I would.
I'm sorry.
I didn't read my book.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. It's, leave, leave, it might be important.
So, I'm gonna fish it out of the trash. So that other document, you're saying, so basically, the regulations would not have anything about how the payment of little taxes, that would be a completely separate document?
Yeah.
And I think it would be good to start the process of working on that, how that would be set up and.
Yeah.
What that compensation would look like, based off, you know, um, does it need a county based theirs off kilowatts? How much like this?
Yeah, because ones, I'm guessing, you know, it was a taxation, right?
Well, the Nevoah County was, I believe it's listed as a donation, but it's set up over thirty years.
See, because that's, yeah, and the thing, the vision I'm getting to is if you, if you do any type of, you know, you pay us something.
Right.
Personally.
Right.
It's usually one of two things, either it's administrative costs, in which case, the administrative cost has to be kind of established and be a flow through, you can't just say.
Right.
It's a million dollars and thank you, it's gonna be, well, we figured out it's a cost this amount, can then the second one be, you know, it's tax, we're gonna put this in the general fund, we're gonna.
That's exactly, that's exactly right.
So that's why it was.
Two different documents, three total.
Yeah, and that's, this, I didn't have any concept of that kind of being an individual separate. Question, Philip?
The article?
Page one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
When I'm pulling up, it was about article twenty-seven. These landscaping records?
Yeah, well, that was, I looked at, yeah, and that was, this was originally Lee's start theme.
And there, yeah, he said there was someone that he, he was having, because he pulled up from other.
I think because it was, it was one page long, the, the actual one and on page one, the real twenty-seven?
So.
Because there was like a paragraph, this, I guess, I think that he thought, we can take that out and put it in another section. And then we've got a whole, we've got a new section, twenty-seven.
You know the, the stuff that I sent you?
Yeah.
Like, just a recommendation to that, I thought would be the most appropriate place to, to change that, article thirty?
We're, we're open to, I'm open to all of that.
Okay.
So, yeah, I hadn't had a chance to dig into that yet, so I think we're all, right now, I could've put lines over it, it was just.
Okay.
But we haven't.
Wanted to make sure, because.
No, there, there's no pride in where this place, for me, at least.
Like I said, I think that was the last thing that he was working on, was because he pulled things from different articles and just stuck them in there and having to go through and do all the, he, he wasn't up on getting everything redumbered and redid on everything yet.
Yeah, that's the main thing we're trying to do is having a full plan.
Yeah, we work.
Re-qualification.
So I, I would just look at that and see what you think of, of that type of play, doing an addendum or something for each. So, um, you want me just to re-overs or just take it for future possible concerns?
Well, I think, I think it's up to your, I think what we're trying to do is if you wanna read through it, if you have thoughts now, I mean, as we go through, or if you wanna read and come back another time. I'm not trying to push, I'm just saying, you're wel, you're more than welcome to stay.
How long are you guys?
Oh, we're just gonna bounce back and forth.
Playing it out for us?
I think, well, I think what, if I'm guessing, the plans here, we're gonna, I'm gonna have, they've already, you know, I had, we had no set amounts of some of these things as far as numbers.
I think, you said, you said, well, we're, we're doing kind of the five thousand foot view right now, just bouncing through it, going, okay, what about this? And then we'll start to narrow in as we go, so if you see something from that distance, while you're here.
Yeah, so I understand, that's why.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I, I knew that was an issue, but I had to start somewhere, so, and that, that's probably gonna be the other thing I'm gonna talk about is version control. What I don't want is to get out of heat, get three different versions floating around.
Right.
So, um, right now, I volunteer to manage for the versions.
Okay.
So just know that if you send something to me and I don't acknowledge it, then that means it's meant to. Reassert yourself, but do bigger. Because I wanna, I wanna be able to make sure that we get the input in, we have, you know, it might just be the situation where I incorporate things and then everybody just take a break and then I come back.
Right, and Kathleen, just for your information, as we do that, so if, if we've given Todd eight different things to update within this version, so that you have a new version, we'll provide you, if you're here next week.
Okay.
With that new version, just so, what he's saying is we don't have three different ones floating around, somebody going, what, what about this? That way you always have the up-to-date one.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
So, yeah, so well, like, so you send, you give us a new version, I'm gonna hand you my old version right now, so that it looks, you know, I don't want, I don't want, because I probably won't have more.
I don't wanna give you, you put me there, I, I just do have the, the newer updated version. Very good.
Version conversion.
So just date it and then when the next one comes, get rid of that one.
Perfect, yeah, just.
Because I want some of it on the same page, no, you know, well, you tried to slip this here on me, I don't, I don't want, I don't want that, I want everything.
Yeah, just, yeah, then we. Yeah, just, yeah, then we have people talking about things with them, Kathleen, six months ago.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, there was one question I had, if I can find it, here we go, setbacks. Well, I'll try to find it, so, okay, nine. Do we have somewhere in that section where it talks about under setbacks, waivers? I know we talked about waivers a little bit today.
There is, uh, if you look at, uh, where was it? Here, under B, there is, uh, the waiver of assorts in there, because that was what we said we wanted, we want, did we, we agreed on a thousand feet, right? So, if you read in there, it says unless a lesser setback is agreed to you by the owner of the residence. So, that is one variance right there in the setbacks.
Say that again, one more time.
Okay, uh, let me just read it. The solar panels and apartment structures shall be located a minimum of one thousand feet from any existing residence as measured from the dwelling, unless a lesser setback is agreed to you by the owner of the residence.
Is that different than stating that there's a waiver? The reason I bring this up is the mayor's. So, Chris Johnson, who was in here, part of our, uh, community group that showed up. Uh, hi, Todd.
Hey, Todd.
Chris said, one of the statements that I broke down, and he said, or actually. We tied.
Todd, me, Todd. Todd, me, Todd, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, Todd, Todd.
There you go. Doctor, doctor.
Sounds like an echo in here. Was, Johnson said, get rid of the waiver in this instance to limit subjectivity. So, and I just, I still have that document from when we had that group in here, and notes that we had made when talking to those guys about this.
And that's.
How is that limiting subjectivity?
I don't know.
I mean, it's driving.
So, if you don't have one, right, you're saying, don't have any way to waive.
Yes, right.
I mean, that is, it doesn't let, I suppose, probably, you know, your cynical view, even somebody's thought of this. But you have a landlord who's in the middle there, and, and normally, it would be what he was getting, shaking his ass, and suddenly, there's a. And they're okay, and outside the way. Oh, and or, that would just be ad hoc, that every time you have one of these things, you know, you have a bunch, you got thirty waivers, and you, and you just waive away restrictions and then.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, the planning concept here is in fact zoning rules are there and you follow them, not to be accepted.
Correct.
You know, or very limited exceptions, because you're planning something for future, the next thirty years. And should a landlord today have the right to, you know, waive use, it's gonna affect things for thirty years. So, it's a good, I mean, it's a good point.
Because, because, I can't remember, it's a long going to talk about this. So, land, or homeowner, waiver says, doesn't have to, doesn't have to be the two hundred and fifty feet back off the road. They put it up for sale, the next owner doesn't get to waive it, it's already done for him. And I think that's what he was getting, to a certain extent.
I think the argument there is a buyer beware concept.
I, I agree, I'm just saying, I think that was part of the thought process, and I wanted to bring that out.
Well, okay, so then, if you're gonna look at that, you do the page ten F, and it says, unless waived by twenty property owner writing as required area, and a twenty-five foot deep bumper area shall be provided. So, do we just take that out too?
Well, here's, here may be the concept that is just a difference, right? And it's a variance concept rather than a waiver. I mean, you don't have, generally, you don't have a waiver right to anything that's known in code, you, but you do have the right to request a variance.
Okay.
If there's some special condition in property, some oddity in shape, size, location, or something, or that's a little bit loose, we go to the zoning planning commission and say, my, my property is different, it's weird, you know, it doesn't fit this, this idea, so can I get a variance so I can build my, my house in this narrow block, the way?
Right.
So, we take out the ability of the homeowner to do that with a variance allowed by the planning commission as an independent body to say generally, you're upping your, your work on, you know, planning commission and the zoning staff to do this, but basically, the landlord can do that, the, maybe the landlord and the owner of the facilities can come together and say, you know, we would like to have this changed from a, you know, five hundred foot setback to a two hundred foot setback, here's the reasons. And maybe the good reasons, and the planning procedure, but it takes that, you know, we, we, two people agree to their own benefits.
So, the waiver could be done through the zoning and planning.
Yeah.
Versus just them signing off, like.
Change it to, to, um, the variance.
Mark thoughts?
I'm, so, I'm, I'm still coming back to B then.
I don't.
You're coming back to what?
I mean.
V as a victor?
B as a boy?
Well, well, you just.
Unless a lesser setback is agreed to you by the owner of the residence.
Well, you, you change the soul, you change the whole rest essentially to have it in place else, where it be that there is an annual right to a landlord to agree to a lesser setback, and to any landlord.
No, this wasn't the adjoining landlord, on B.
Oh.
This was the landlord.
Are you on seven B or seven?
Seven B, page nine. Nine.
Okay.
Seven B, page nine, where, like I said, that's.
Your system, right, it's okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about, you know, you, oh, we keep saying that we don't want to limit landlord rights. But if we say they can't do that, can't do it for a lesser setback, what are we doing?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, again, this was just something that was brought up.
Yeah.
By the community panel, and I just wanna make sure we.
Well, I mean, he posed his side of it, that, his landlord rights are always subject to zoning rules, and that's supposed to be the concept. The, the zoning authority is supposed to have and said, maybe this isn't so good for this, this person, but you've got a concept. Reason we have this as a business, this is C one, is because there's, there's a car place and an auto parts place and you're in the middle.
Sure.
That's, and that's why you're not getting it, not because we're, you know, we're bad people, so.
So, then, do we, do we take this on B and say, uh, agreed to on lesser setback if approved by the planning and zoning commission?
I think that's the policy question for you guys, is, is just, you hit the nut of it right here, is do you think that a landlord who has that, is within that area, that setbacks would be in proportion, normally, could waive that? And how do you, and, and do you have to have everybody in, that's, in that circle? In slot, and, and, or do you just leave it up to the, and again, I'm, I'm fine if you wanna leave it in there, I just go in through my notes and.
Sure.
And I know that's, that was one of the things that was in there. Um, and, so, we can leave it and, and just move ahead, but when you think about it, so I'll think about it, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's table it till next week and, and think about that, because I'm, like I say, I'm, I'm.
I don't know.
I'm trying to really landlord's rights against saying, no, you can't do this, when it really doesn't affect anybody's, but that residence.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know.
I can hypothetically see the scenario of where I have eighty acres, and I have fenced off maybe five acres of my living area, my house, my garage, and everything. I've got a tree line on the other side of that fence, to where if I am approached by coming closer to my property, I'm not gonna see it at all, but if I know it's gonna be there, I think some negotiation is fine, especially when it comes to landlord's rights, the decisions they make. So, but, I mean, I could see a scenario like that, try, try to hypothetically picture this in my mind. Okay, you can move your panels closer to my house, I agree, but I'm probably gonna cash in on it.
So, then it would be a variance with the appeals law?
Well, I think, what, you need, need to talk about, we're talking about the property rights side, that means individual waiver, that you guys would kinda have to respect, if it's all.
One or the other?
Yeah.
I guess, is the.
Yeah, the, the one side is, the landlord waivers, so they're fully up to their discretion, they grant early on. You guys, the planning commission doesn't have to say about it unless it's, you know, it somehow doesn't fit, it's not within the zone or whatever. You guys, that's opposed to, the landlord has no say, you guys can, can give a variance if the landlord and the company come to you.
Yeah.
And say, we're gonna ask for a variance, we're gonna meet these three conditions.
So, where it says from any existing residents, and it should be from any existing participating residents?
No.
Could it be participators, or was it anybody?
Anybody, any resident.
Right, right now, anybody.
Yes, so if you're participating, and you don't wanna give a waiver, they still gonna do the two hundred and fifty feet in front of their house? But if they're not participating, and they say, you know what, doesn't bother me, I really would rather look at A B or C, you know, if trees get too high, I wouldn't see the sunset, you know, I, you know, they can ask for a waiver. Just for the record, not that Maryland is being considered for this, so I just thought I'd throw, I don't think any of these guys.
I'll just write that down, so.
What?
You know, of course.
So. Take a look at it.
We got a lot, we got a lot to do.
Yeah.
Lots to think about.
Yeah.
And that was the idea.
All right, we'll keep chewing on it until we get to a point where we're ready to send it to zoning and planning, and then Todd will be available for your zoning and planning, um. Are we happy? Did you have, uh, did you know that?
No, I didn't know that.
When was that, when he hit me? Well, whenever we turned this in to them, I think it'd be good that you're there to answer any legal questions that they were have as they go through these similar, what we're doing.
Where, where does this, your guys need?
Well, it's typically the second Thursday of every month, which has been every month.
So, it's Thursday. But we're a ways.
Oh, yeah, we're a ways, ways off.
From handing these to them, because.
Yeah, well, I, all I'm saying is, is I've got, it's, evening meetings are a real problem for me. So, I've got, basically, right now, twelve out of sixteen dates, evening.
So, special meeting, special meetings, please?
Maybe, yeah, I, sometimes I, I fill up enough to be available with the folks, some of these places, and make them that off, because.
Do a special meeting.
It's a, it's calling the night off, I don't know. And.
You actually get those?
And so, how the, Ally, just so you understand, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but we're gonna continue to work on these. Till we get to the draft where we think it's ready to go to zoning and planning.
Yeah.
We will allow Kate to either go to a regular meeting, whatever that is, copies will be available for the public, uh, they are now. Um, they will have an opportunity to look it over, and then determine what they're gonna do with it, and have public meetings, multiple public meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, for information, and, and ask what.
All right?
You got a pick?
Maybe. Yeah, I guess, you, you, you're free to go for it. And, and I was thinking, he's looking for a job? I do have a question.
Credit officer?
You know, I, I do have a, a question for you, Kate. Um, did you get applications?
Yes.
Good.
I have one more day, could you, what, be in the lunch until next week, or do you want what I have now?
I'll just bring, bring down what you have, and if you get more, then we'll take a look at it.
I have one more that's filling it out, and we'll turn it in.
Perfect.
Tomorrow, so, I'll go grab.
Thank you.
Anything else I'm thinking of? I wanna hear what the judge says.
What's that?
Said I wanna hear what the judge says, right?
Oh, I don't think you do that. I don't give, I don't give legal advice.
Apparently, I get, I'm, I have to go to school, so.
You got a good hospital?
That I can go to.
Okay, so, we have a resolution here that we, we passed, but we had to make a change in it, uh, because it was not correct, so, this is, um, the zoning and planning suggestions for just the words and all the different areas here. So, we're gonna, I'd like to have another motion to approve those, and. Whenever you're ready, second.
What was the, uh, what was the change that we made in?
And just one word.
Just one word?
However you go it out.
It's dilatory district. Challenge that a should.
There was one more, which I didn't hear.
All right, so, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four.
Yep.
Second.
If moved to second, any further discussion, we'll, if not, all the members say aye?
Aye.
All of them at the same time? Motion carries. Todd, thank you.
You bet, I think we're gonna send a PDF of that one, and that PDF will be, so I won't give the word version out to anybody, so. Keep that version trawled.
Yeah.
I, I agree. Coming back tonight?
Yes, I am.
We'll see you then.
We'll see, guys.
Yeah.
You guys, you can have dinner for?
I mean, these kids.
If you get a PDF, or you need to throw it back to work, completely, what'd you say, what for?
Dinner.
Oh.
No, the newspaper's gone.
What'd you do with it?
Oh, same thing, made a mistake, so I have to take it out a little bit, it happens.
All right.
That happens. I've been doing this a long time, it always happens.
Yep.
So, you just smile and keep on going.
Seen it now.
Yeah.
All right. And I, I, I'll let Tim know, I think we have service, yeah, I don't have any service up here.
You have, you have iPhone?
Verizon, yeah.
iPhone?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, it's your iPhone. Right there, I know.
It's the software?
It's, it's Verizon, Apple stuff.
Is it?
Oh, I just looked it up.
It just says S O S?
Yep.
And is it fixed?
No.
It's just in the hole there, yeah?
No, it's Verizon in a widespread area.
That happened, what, a month ago?
Something like that, Nikki said that she couldn't make phone call and blah, 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 and I said, here, use my, use my un-Apple smartphone, because it's a better phone.
That's why, that's why you radio check down to one thousand.
Right here, flip phone.
Yep.
I don't have the issue that you high-tech people have. I'm a simple man.
I don't have any.
You are complex, complicated.
Well, I try to keep my life simple. I have a flip phone, because I say a lot of stupid stuff, and I don't get texts from people, so they can prove it.
What?
You're, is yours an Apple?
No.
Then you're good.
That's what I thought.
I thought you were done.
Yeah.
Hey, I tried not to bother you today. No, not necessarily. Who needed to ask that question?
I think mine's an Apple. And it's.
Uh-oh.
You need a whole five.
Before.
Didn't need a, need a whole five, I think it was just.
It was, uh, it was in the southern and eastern part of the case.
Oh, yeah.
You're a.
I'm learning a lot, I find it fascinating, actually.
I'm not. But I used to be super creative, you know, as previous. We should have, we should have.
Yeah, okay.
Just them on this topic.
It's fascinating, I can only understand what goes on, and so.
Good, it's good for my brain, plus it's a minute.
I wish many people to show you that.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Because otherwise, I'm not good, definitely, you're a.
It's, it's interesting, I'm learning a lot, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping it comes.
Well, yeah, you want to show the courthouse.
I hear that's interesting, too.
They're gonna wear that.
No, 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 I, um, a student of mine in Rossville, he would go, so it was in Rossville, so he would go to the courthouse, and I guess it was just like a lot of traffic stuff, and he just, he was a retired guy, he just got a kick out of it for some reason, because, you know, there's twenty-four that goes by, and so, I'm sure they get a lot of things like that.
It's huge.
Like, what, so?
Yeah, I used to teach yoga, but now it's something called healthy movement, physical movement, and it's just. It's nicer, it's easier on the body, um, the teacher is, her name's Kelly Bowman, and she's a biochemist, and so, she did a lot of different exercises and figured out, like, encouraging myself, so she figured a way to not hurt herself, along, she teaches that.
She was in the army. Push-ups sit-ups.
It has to be unbiased.
And then I retired and realized my body condition.
And then I retired and realized my body, cause I didn't do that, cause I walk that running. I walk five miles.
White walking is really good for you.
How do you get that across?
She talks about that a lot, and I try to walk twice a day.
That's why I tried to explain to them, like, well, you weren't behind you, but there are, we are. Pedometer keeps track of this, I don't know accurate, but it makes me feel good.
And sort of in books, for me, we do have the.
They're really, got the army, I would game them, I would, cause they've worked in front of them.
And first thing.
Stuff to very.
Basically, it grows, basically.
It sits there, but.
We, was Todd gonna get those?
I looked in the mirror, I'm like, you're suggesting.
I think that's what he's gonna go back and do, okay, today.
But that was good, cause I did something.
Cause it's not on her head, so I.
Did you look in the mirror and accept it?
Right. It's, it's a very complex.
No, we'll go before that, we'll go, that's ours.
Just a program diet, durability, activity, that kind of thing, what's going on, how you're in mind, what you're, what you're putting your logic at.
I just do.
I guess, if you watch fifteen minutes of TV a day, that will change your metabolism, but that was the old TV, so it matters.
Like I said, I really do have a flip phone.
Yeah, I have one too, I, I was forced to get a smartphone, so I got like, I've a, like an iPhone seven, I think they're fifteen right now, mine has a hundred likes.
Yeah, I went to the. I want a flip phone, guys.
What about, do you have a mic?
Digging through a pot.
Oh, that's.
Right, so. Does he have a mic for this?
As long as it works.
I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I know what they can do.
Did he have a mic for this?
Smartphones and iPhones. There's no privacy.
He had a.
Trying everything.
Right.
Well, yeah, I wasn't thinking this going there, just next year, if you're out there, I mean, there's.
I could turn the phone off, and listen to everything that was being said, or see whatever you have seen, and not to mature.
That's why I have a tape right there, showing one of my phones, too. I mean, I understand that I don't have a microphone, I turned off all the microphones, I mean, it's on right now, but, um, I turned my mic on, but they can turn off if they want to. I understand there's a background noise, but I'm not gonna change who I am, because I feel like, trying to be a good person, I'm not gonna change who I am, if they think so.
I don't have anything to hide to begin.
We should have, they should be smiling, because you don't have a microphone, you don't have a mic, but they shouldn't be.
She's on a magic back, she's a woman.
I'm sorry.
It's good to have that other shed that you have, know you, I can be nice to you, but I mean, that can be on a cart.
I have a toilet room, yeah.
Okay, I get it, that's, that's how I get it, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yes, great. Or, you know, everybody, I see in my drawings.
Okay, so Vicki and.
Is it what?
Everybody sees a judge, you know. Some type of issue, not everybody, sometimes there's good people that just screwed up, but.
Oh, got kind of cool, yeah.
So many of them are good. Just I know these guys, you know, I've been pulled over a few times, but I'm fun enough, probably won't get.
Yeah.
You've had seven drunk ones suspended, that's just a big, big car.
That's a lot of bad choices, like I've done, there were just too bad, I'm sure you want them to change, but they have the words to change.
That's why I really, I'm really passionate about children who need a care, and jewels, because at that age, they still might have. When you're talking to a fifty-year-old guy.
Yeah, kids are hard though, too, just because, well, how, because I've worked with a kid, and.
Well, we may all need.
I can do with a kid for like three minutes, he told, he would hold my phone out, and so, you can think that you, you have an impact, and we should all, if we can, you know, be that person that can uplift a child, that's great, but they still have to do hard, to, you know, what it is.
I don't know, I just, I would think.
Well, they're normal, so, how do you break that, for example?
Yeah.
At a family, and six of us, five of us, fully invested, dog, fisherman, all of us.